...of the Board of Education for Tuesday, May 11th, 2010. Well, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation for this evening's meeting.
We have Vivian Rodriguez.
Si, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesite la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor, levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias a usted.
We also have, as you can see on our screen, hearing assistance for those who are hearing impaired. So if anybody needs or would like to take advantage of that. And then we have introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions by the superintendent.
Well, good. We're honored tonight. Thank you for a couple of reasons. We have students with us tonight who are National Merit Finalists and National Merit Scholars. This is the time of year when we recognize finalists and scholars in the National Merit Scholarship Program. This year's competition began as an initial screening in October 2008, when more than one and a half million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools across the country took the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Last fall, the highest-scoring participants at each state, representing less than 1 percent of the state seniors, were named semifinalists, and these 16,000 -- we're narrowing quite a bit here -- these 16,000 students had the opportunity to continue in the competition. Well, our group tonight were in that group. The field was then narrowed to approximately 15,000 students who met a number of requirements to advance to the finalist level of competition. And tonight, we recognize our district's 16 finalists and one scholar who received a $2,500 scholarship from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. While these students are academic leaders in their schools, what is yet more remarkable is that each of them contributes so much to their school beyond academics. Several are varsity athletes, others are co-editors or reporters for the school newspaper, are involved in the production of the school bulletin. This group of leaders in student government -- this group has a number of leaders in student government. While we publicly acknowledge their academic achievement, we recognize their significant contributions to our school community. Students, I'd like to call your names, have you come forward to the podium. We have Robin Sowoski, who's our Associate Superintendent, with a plaque for each of you. Sky Adams from Dos Pueblos. Sky? Congratulations, Sky. Sky is headed for Brown University, majoring in computer science. Ellen Feldman from Dos Pueblos. Ellen will attend Viterbi School of Engineering -- is it Viterbi? Viterbi. Oh, acento. Viterbi School of Engineering at USC. As a trustee scholar, Ellen will major in electronic engineering with a minor in music. Jeanne -- no, Jeanne-Marie Gonzalez. Jeanne-Marie from Dos Pueblos High School. Jeanne-Marie will be attending UC Berkeley, and her major is undeclared in the College of Letters and Science. You've got plenty of time. Do us proud. Raji Singh from Dos Pueblos. Raji will attend UCLA and major in pre-med. Also from Dos Pueblos, I don't believe Nicholas Su made it here tonight. Now, he said he had other engagements. He will attend Stanford University. And Angian Wu. Angian? Angian Wu will attend the California Institute of Technology. He's thinking about majoring in electrical engineering and maybe business as well. Angian, knowing your record, I'm sure you'll have time for both, actually. Board, as you read in E-News, Angian is one-fifth of the Dos Pueblos team that participated in the National Science Bowl in Washington, DC last week. Congratulations. And from San Marcos High School, did Ellen Gleason make it here tonight? She -- that was iffy. She will attend Georgetown University. Kevin Groleski, excuse me. Kevin. Kevin will attend Columbia University and major in math. And Johnny Manzo, did you make it, Johnny? No. Johnny will attend Harvard College. Pardon? Volleyball. Yeah, that volleyball. Adrian Symes. Adrian, did I pronounce your last name correctly? Is it Symes? Okay. Is going to Boston University and will major in biomedical engineering. And Garrett Timmons, did Garrett make it tonight? No Garrett tonight. From Santa Barbara High School, Brian Joseph is unable to be here because of school activity. Are we playing San Marcos and -- oh, okay. Brian's been accepted to Dartmouth. Ken Myers. Ken. Ken will attend UCLA and plans to major in business and law. Amber Rockwood. Amber? Amber says she may not be able to attend. She will attend Stanford University. Madison Taylor. Madison will attend the University of Chicago. She has not decided on a major yet, but probably will choose biochemistry or another major related to science. And Trevor Ventorelli. Trevor will be attending UC Berkeley as an English major. Finally, Rebecca Nielsen-Robins. Rebecca will attend Harvard University and double-major in English pre-med. Rebecca is a recipient of a National Merit Scholarship Award, and as such, she is a National Merit Scholar. Congratulations to our 16 National Merit Finalists and Scholar. And students, before you go anywhere, I'm sure the board has some comments to make. And let's take a moment to ask your parents in the audience to stand up. We also have administrators, we have principals, assistant principals, to stand up so we can thank them for encouragement and support throughout your academic career.
And any teachers.
Also, students, in a moment, we want you to go to the courtyard so we can get a picture of you together. Ms. Gordero?
And also a reminder that on Saturday on Channel 18, if you would tune in at, what is it, 5 o'clock, you can see yourselves being honored on TV. But before you do that, I really would like to take the opportunity to congratulate all of you and express our deep and abiding pride in the achievements that you have all garnered here, and recognition of all the hard work and effort that it represents on your part and on the part of your parents and others who have supported you, teachers, administrators, et cetera. This is not an honor to be taken lightly, and we recognize it. Those of us who value education really want to express our admiration for the way that you have achieved in this area. So thank you very much. Congratulations. And we take great pride in claiming you as our students.
Congratulations, students. The courtyard. What an outstanding group. I don't remember 16 finalists before. I was looking for Barbara. She's out holding the camera, I'm sure. Well, Board, we have one other presentation. We just recognized our student academic leaders. Now, I'd like to recognize one of our teacher leaders. Marilyn Garza. Marilyn, would you please come forward? Marilyn Garza, Santa Barbara Junior High School. This is the camera side, right here. Marilyn is an eighth-grade science teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High School, and she is the new 2010-11 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. Marilyn was selected for her professionalism, enthusiasm, creativity, and remarkable successes inside and outside the classroom. As you may recall, in 2007, she was recipient of the prestigious California Milken National Educator Award, received three Teachers Network Disseminator Grants, and was named a County Distinguished Educator. Well, Marilyn earned her bachelor's degree in material science engineering from the University of California at Berkeley, and her master's of education degree and teaching credential from UC Santa Barbara. Prior to teaching, she worked as an engineer. She now teaches eighth-grade physical science and math. She's a teacher's teacher who has served as a BITSA. BITSA is Beginning Teacher Support and Assessment, mentor for beginning teachers, active in UCSB's Research Experience for Teachers Program, participated in the South Coast Science Institute, gate training, and conferences, and Science Partnership for School Innovation. Marilyn has been recipient of a $1.3 million National Science Foundation GK-12 grant that allowed graduate science students from UCSB to work in her classroom. She secured a LEAPs, which stands for Let's Explore Applied Physical Science, National Science Foundation Grant, for which she has been lead teacher at her school, and this is only the tip of the iceberg. For Marilyn, science education isn't just about engaging students. Science education is about engaging families. She founded and established Family Ultimate Science Exploration Fuse Night, which I announced to the board a couple of times, where students and families conduct hands-on science activities. She also holds Mentor Night, when students talk to graduate students about science project ideas. She encourages students to be teachers in Nano-Leaps, in nanotechnology, where a group of eighth-grader trainers -- eighth-graders are trained to demonstrate concepts they've learned in class and make presentations to elementary students. We have only scratched the surface, and I encourage the board, our audience, and reviewers to read more about Marilyn on our district's website. Now, she regularly ignites the passion in students for learning and for enthusiasm about science, and we love her dearly.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Board, I am truly honored and proud to represent our district as Teacher of the Year. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I'd like to congratulate you as well. No wonder our students are doing so well. As the ones we just observed here earlier, they have to try and live up to the inspiration of their brilliant teachers. And we appreciate all that you do for our district. We know the extent to which you have put your heart and soul into supporting our students in their academic efforts. We appreciate that, and we acknowledge the tremendous honor of being the county Teacher of the Year. I know that -- I don't know if you have any family here, but I know family members also support the teachers and our other staff in terms of the hours upon end that they give to our students. So we'd like to thank your family as well for supporting you and doing that for us and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, I have three of my former students who are in the 16, so I'm very proud.
Oh, well, as I said, no wonder. Thank you.
Madam President, I would just simply like to add, as you remember my son, who took your science class, and of his memories at Santa Barbara Junior High School, you're the tops.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And that's it for presentations tonight.
So now, we will move on to the superintendent's report, after you get a drink.
Well, Board, STAR testing is just wrapping up. All elementary schools on the traditional calendar and secondary schools finished on Monday. All year-round schools finish tomorrow. So, you know, that's a real hallmark in our district. The California High School exit exam takes place today and tomorrow. Santa Barbara Community Academy and Peabody Charter have been named both California Distinguished Schools, and they will be honored at an award ceremony on June 4th. Tomorrow, May 12, is California Day of the Teacher. According to California Teachers Association, Day of the Teacher arose out of legislation cosponsored by CTA, California Teachers Association, and the Association of Mexican-American Educators. Senator Joseph Montoya, we remember Joseph Montoya, don't we, wrote the bill, and it was adopted in 1982 as Senate Bill 1546. California has patterned its celebration after the traditional El Dia del Maestro festivities that are observed in Mexico and other Latin American countries. The California Education Code indicates that on the Day of the Teacher, all public schools and educational institutions are encouraged to observe the day and to conduct exercises commemorating and directing attention to teachers and the teaching profession. Teachers were certainly highlighted in our employee appreciation this last week. Tomorrow is also National School Nurses Day, and we thank nurses Cindy Chung, Michelle Melendez, Cassandra Ornellis, Liz Christian Christensen -- you know, Christian, it is Christian -- and Debbie Pentland for their commitment to the health and well-being of our students. Moving on, one of the Board's focus goals on student achievement included increasing participation in AVID, the Advancement Via Individual Determination Program. On Wednesday, May 19, at the Marjory Luke Theater, 73 families and our students and their families will celebrate the first time all three traditional high schools have a senior class of AVID students. So we've worked our way through the grades so that we're finally hitting the senior class, students that have enrolled in the program since their freshman year. Some of these students started AVID at junior high school level. And on May 21st, we recognize the outstanding service of our district's retirees. And Board, you will be getting more information about that celebration. Then, on May 26, the Anti-Defamation League will be hosting the annual No Place for Hate recognition at the Earl Warren Showground, 5:00 to 6:30. I am pleased to report that this is the first year that 100 percent of our schools are participating in the program, and every one of our schools qualifies as a No Place for Hate school. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and information items on school and district matters. A copy of the most recent Board Brief is available in the reception area. And in the last Board Brief, Deputy Superintendent Eric Smith provided information on how the state's fair share calculation will affect our district by capturing $116,000 from the elementary district's Tier 3 categorical money to pay the basic aid fair share of state cuts in revenue. We can provide further explanation if Board members still have questions about the fair share calculation. In fact, I have my cheat sheet with me, and in just a moment, you'll be able to ask. Upcoming events. We have a number of upcoming events that are listed on the side table in this flyer. It's a busy time of the year. Santa Barbara High School's production of Singin' in the Rain continues on May 13, 14, 15. La Colina High School's 50th anniversary celebration is this Friday. Galita Valley Junior High's advanced band and orchestra performs at Disneyland on May 15. Galita Valley Junior High's beginning and advanced band concert takes place on May 19. Santa Barbara High School's Spring Dance Concert, Streams of Passion, is on May 20 and 21. Cleveland Elementary School's annual crescendo, celebrating the arts, dance, music, and arts event, takes place on May 26. You'll be able to see all of these on our website, right, Mr. Hetjunk? So if you refer to the website, you'll see the times and locations. And Galita Valley Junior High School's Jazz Ensemble and Orchestra on May 27 at 6:30. Whoops, I turned the page. Santa Barbara Junior High School's Spring Concert featuring Jazz Band, Concert Band, Orchestra, and Drum Line is on May 27. Please visit our website for more information. And tonight, we do have a student presentation, but perhaps we have some board questions about the superintendent's report.
I did have one question about the funds that the state is taking as part of their fair share. Sometimes we call it the unfair share, I know. But how are the excess property tax revenues calculated?
They're calculated as a percentage of revenue limit. And I believe, Meg Jete, I believe it's 5.81 percent of what would be the revenue limit. So there's still a revenue limit amount shown at the state level, even though we are a basic aid district. This year, that would be $1.5 million. Now, they take the lesser amount of the excess tax, which is $116,000, or all the way up to $1.5 million. So if we had excess property tax revenues of $2 million, they would take the full $1.5 million. Meg Jete, do you have anything to add to that?
Was your question about how do they calculate the excess property taxes? It's a -- you go through the revenue limit calculation, you come to $1 million. If the excess -- if your property taxes are $500,000, then you get $500 worth of state aid, so you're not basic aid. So in a basic aid district, if your revenue, your state aid comes to $1 million, and you have $1,116,000, you have excess property taxes of $116,000. If your property taxes grow and your revenue limit is still at that 18 percent deficit, your excess property taxes will grow. So, no, it depends on how much your property taxes go up. Your ADA is very -- has multiple elements to it.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the student report. I believe that we have Isaac Levinson here from La Cuesta High School.
It's Kimberly Tally.
Oh, it is Kimberly Tally. I'm sorry. Okay, I thought we -- I thought I had the wrong name. Okay, so Kimberly Tally is here.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Tally, and I am a senior at La Cuesta High School. I have attended La Cuesta for two years. Our new campus feels like a second family when you walk through the doors. I am an active participant in La Cuesta's Leadership Club. Our teachers have taught us how to survive in the real world. We really appreciate how much they do for us. This year has been a very busy one. In the fall, we all walked to the county bowl to listen to drummers from Japan. Several students worked at Casa de la Raza, creating the Halloween Horror House. We have gone on many academic field trips, such as the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles, Santa Barbara City College, Cal Poly, Questa College, and Moore Park College. Instead of feeling afraid to go to college, it now seems like an interesting experience that I want to try. We have also been on several walking trips to the art museum. We have Tina from the museum to come to La Cuesta downtown and at the La Cuesta DP to teach us different art projects. Our artwork has been on display in this room and at the Galita Community Center and in the Santa Barbara Art Museum. We have also had many assemblies right here in this boardroom, also known as the La Cuesta Auditorium. The Royal Chicano Air Force with Esteban Villa, a muralist, Oscar Ortiz, a Mexican mind from UCSB, Horizon Line, who performs skits about prejudice and perception, and the Drama Kings from Los Prietos Boys Camp. Fifteen of our students are members of the Out to Lunch Club. Each student has an adult mentor who takes them to lunch once a month. Students enjoy talking to other adults who are in the workforce. Plus, they really enjoy the food. Many of the mentors work here at the district office. One of the large projects that leadership worked on was a rummage sale, which had great success. We had it in the parking lot and earned enough funds for a popcorn machine and leadership awards. Every six weeks, students are given awards for their perfect attendance and academic achievement. Every month, two students are selected by the staff to receive the Student of the Month award. Santa Barbara Bank and Trust gave us a grant, so each student is awarded $25. It was -- I was Student of the Month in March. It felt good to know that I was being acknowledged for my hard work. Our graduation is Wednesday, June 2, at the Santa Barbara County Courthouse, Sunken Gardens, at 5:15 PM. We will be having an end-of-the-year picnic barbecue at Tucker's Grove on Thursday, June 3. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tally. That was an excellent report, quite thorough, and we appreciate it. And congratulations on your acknowledgement as Student of the Month. Okay, that brings us to board comments and correspondence. Do we have any comments or correspondence from the board?
Well, I just want to comment on La Cuesta, because I think what La Cuesta is doing under the leadership of Kathy Abney is every bit as important as what we see routinely in the high-achieving students from our mainstream high schools. And I just think it's terrific, and your presentation was terrific, and a great reminder of the work that you do, for which I personally am very grateful.
Thank you. That brings us now to the announcement of closed session action. We have one action to announce. With great pleasure, I announced that the board voted 4-0 to ratify the appointment of Sean Carey as the new principal of Dos Pueblos High School. And Ms. Carey is in our audience, so if you would like to stand and be recognized. Ms. Carey, would you like to come forward and make a comment? We don't want to put you on the spot, but we certainly want to give you an opportunity to --
Put her on the spot.
That's true. Just let you -- give you a little taste of what you're in for.
I'll be brief. I just want to say it's been a privilege to serve DP in a variety of roles over the last 12 years, and being so familiar with the campus over that time has helped to convince me that Dos Pueblos is a truly unique school in terms of its academic performance and its impressive extracurricular achievements, and its rich and broad-based community support. So I look forward to this opportunity to serve as a steward of the excellence for which DP has come to be known, and I am really honored by the support of the board and the school district and the various stakeholder groups on my site. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with all of you to sustain that excellence.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you as well. Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Swanitz for his tenure with our school as well, and we wish you well in your future endeavors. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Melissa Wilkins and Becca Williams. You can speak each for three minutes or together, however you'd like to share your time. You can speak each for three minutes or together, however you'd like to share your time.
My name's Melissa Wilkins. I'm the Friday Night Live Coordinator. And we're both here just to say thank you for your ongoing support of the Friday Night Live mentoring program. It's a part of the youth service program through the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and has been a part of the Santa Barbara School District for over 10 years now. It's a school that pairs high school student, not a school, it's a program, that pairs high school students with junior high students in weekly mentoring sessions that teach various leadership skills as well as following a curriculum that covers drug and alcohol education as well as building resistance skills through fun, alternative activities. So we just wanted to, again, thank you and let you know that we've concluded another successful year. Some of the opportunities that our students have reported experiencing in the program include learning skills like working as part of a group, public speaking, planning activities and active listening. And 76% of our participants either agreed that their involvement in the program helps them decide to do other things instead of using alcohol and other drugs. So, thank you, and here's Becca Williams.
Hello, I'm Becca. I'm the Friday Night Live Mentoring Coordinator. And just last week, we had our last mentoring sessions at all three of the mentoring sites for the school year. I want to thank you for all of your support. This past year has been extremely successful for this program. For example, we had a protege this year from Galita Valley Junior High who was being mentored by a Dos Pueblos High School student. This protege was initially not interested in the subject matter of the program. She was not excited to go to high school and she felt very little attachment to her school. We typically spend our sessions at the junior high, but for the last session, we went to Dos Pueblos so that the mentors could show the proteges around the school. At the end of the session, this junior high student came up to me and said, "I am so excited to go to high school now. It looks so cool and my mentor just told me that she would show me to all of my classes next year." So thank you again for your support and making this wonderful opportunity available to students like her. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work with our students and we appreciate the efforts that you spend with them. That's, those are wonderful kinds of stories to hear, so thank you. Does that conclude public comment?
That concludes public comment.
Okay, then we will move on to item C5, Acceptance of Donations.
I would like to move to approve with appreciation. Second?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. That brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to pull for later consideration? Dr. Noel?
D4, D6, and D11.
Any other items?
And I have a note that item D8 has been rem, is it removed from the agenda? Mr. Hetjung?
Is it removed? Yes.
Okay. Oh, good.
Subcontractors, that's the wrong one.
Yes, subcontractors.
Okay, do I hear a motion regarding the remaining items?
Move to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries 4-0. And for those in the, in the public, items D4, D6, and D11 will be taken up at the end of the meeting. Okay, that brings us to our action agenda. Item E1, Approval of 10th Grade Universal College Preparation Testing.
Well, board, we had a previous discussion on this item and Dr. Davis Hayden is here to present the 10th Grade Universal College Testing Program for your approval. Dr. Hayden is Director of Research, Technology, and Evaluation.
Hello, you got the report in front of you and essentially I quizzed the counselors as to whether or not they would prefer the PSAT and you saw the results of the PSAT this evening right here, the students who took it in their junior year. Or the ACT Plan. Now, the ACT and the SAT testing companies are the two premier testing companies, you might say, and it's about half and half now in terms of usage of those two testing companies. Five or so years ago, we didn't have very many students in our district taking the ACT. It was mainly an East Coast program. But we've gotten up to the point now that we're almost getting equal numbers taking the ACT as take the SAT. Some of the counselors have experience with the ACT Plan, which is given in 10th grade, and they have pretty much universally suggested that we give the ACT Plan for the 10th grade screening for college preparedness. There are also people, though, in our district who have experience with the PSAT and the many variety of programs that the PSAT give. And the PSAT is actually, the college, the College Board, which produces the PSAT, actually probably has a more sophisticated and more in-depth webpage and programs associated with the universal PSAT administration than the ACT Plan. The ACT Plan, though, is more straightforward and many of the counselors and students seem to find it easier to go through and to use. So I'm presenting here today, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other as to which of these two programs you would like to take up. They're almost equal cost because this year, the ACT Plan is being given as a norming project to Santa Barbara High School. The cost, I don't have the money, so the cost has got to come from the general fund, so we're going to have to ask Meg and Eric to find the money for it, but it's not a lot of money, as you can see here. The only one suggestion I have is that if we gave one or the other universally, we should make sure that one of the high schools gets both of them so that we finally will have a direct comparison as to which way we wish to proceed in the future. That'll cost an extra small amount of money, but that would be my suggestion. Other than that, I'm just leaving it up to you to ask questions or to debate which one of these programs you would like to give, if you give any at all, next year in the fall. So do you have any questions?
Well, I'm sure we have some questions. Ms. Deacon, go ahead.
Well, I'll just start. Well, let me start where you ended, when you talked about the need to give, at least at one school, each test. What do you expect to learn by those comparisons?
Well, if the counselors have given both tests to universally, then they get access to all of the programs that come along with that universal testing. In that way, I hate to lean over so far, in that way, they'll be able to give us feedback as to which program the students like the best, which ones they like the best. They'll be able to have more in-depth knowledge of the two programs side by side, you might say. You could just forego that and just pick one and go with it. I'm sure that would be just fine, too.
Well, and I, well, I was more interested, it sounds like you're talking about kind of the ancillary benefits that come with each program as opposed to the results, because I was anticipating you would look at a student's score on each of them and somehow we would use that information in a broader sense.
Well, yes, that is the simple way to use it. You just look at the score and make choices, but there's these programs that come with it that they look at which courses you probably should be taking next in your junior and senior year. They look at colleges that may be, colleges that would match your profile the best. So besides giving the test, both of these programs, both the PSAT and the ACT Plan, have about a 50-minute extra fill-in session where the students fill in all sorts of extra questions that, then they have all this extra information they can give back to the counselors and to the students and their families. So that's the part that is, we don't really have a good comparison in our district.
Okay, thanks. Because I, I guess one of the first questions I had when I read this was, are we doing this for diagnostic purposes or for practice purposes? Because we know the more students take these tests, the more likely they are to do better, hopefully, the next time. And I'm interested to hear you say it's about 50-50 now because historically, I know both the West Coast and the East Coast relied heavily on the SAT and the PSAT, and it was the Midwest and the South that actually were the ACT has been more popular, although I know they're gaining ground and now the UCs accept both and most colleges accept both, so. So it sounds like it's more diagnostic than practice.
Well, both of them are practice and both of them are diagnostic and it's, like I say, a little bit of a toss-up as to which one you decide to choose to go with if you decide to go with either of them.
Well, I am in favor of going with one of these possible menu choices and I'll let my other board members talk about what they think.
Ms. Smith, you had comments or questions?
Parker, I'm sorry, yeah. Hello?
I apologize profusely.
I will, yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in at this point. I really feel like our primary goal, our, you know, it's our board focus goal, which is getting more students to college, particularly our underrepresented students. And so I have been so impressed with districts and states because there are a number of states now that have gone to requiring universal ACT. There are states that are going to universal PSAT. Oregon has done that, I believe, and in California, I know Poway has gone to universal PSAT. Just to really shake up the culture in our schools and make it so that it's just, you know, this is the, 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 these are the steps that you take. You'll take the PSAT and if that's the one that we choose, and then you'll, you'll know if you need to do some review and you'll have some ideas about going ahead and taking the SAT. It just becomes much more normal. And I really look at this as a huge step forward in changing the district college-going culture. And so for that reason, I definitely want to do one of these things. But I guess for me, what, I did some research on it as I was looking into which one is, if there was a better, and there isn't a better, and it just goes to show, some, some students do better on one of the tests, some do better on the other. There are some trends in that sense, but there isn't, the ACT is going to serve some students better and the SAT is going to serve some students better. And so it just seems to me that if we could afford to do it, it's best, it would be best, especially for our lower-income students, to pay, for, for the district to pay for everybody to have both of those preps and take those tests and figure out for yourself which is better. If I can only afford to do one, if I only want to take one of these tests, because I suspect that a lot of people, a lot of our seniors, have taken both of the tests.
Well, let me throw in something here is that if you don't do it universally, you don't get all the benefits. So both of them require that it be a universal test at a high school to get the benefits in 10th grade. So, I mean, you get the scores, of course, but you wouldn't get the benefits without the universal testing.
Right. And I would want it to be universal and I also, I can say right off the bat that I would not be interested in a case where we adopted one for all of the schools and then only had a test site at one of the other schools, because I feel like that would cause a lot of dismay in the community and it's really, it's a benefit to students that I would hate to, to break out even for one year. So my personal preference is to go ahead and go for number five. I do have a question about the cost for number five. And that is, it says approve the purchase for next year of the ACT Plan for all 10th grade and approve the purchase of PSAT for all 11th grade. And you said about $28,000. What I saw was that it was $9,000 for the ACT for everybody.
Oh, I probably forgot to retract the cost for Santa Barbara High.
So it would probably be about $23,000.
Maybe less than that.
Because it was, it was $9,000 for the plan, for the ACT Plan, and then $14,000 for universal PSAT.
Yes, that's about right then.
Okay.
You did the math.
And I know that we have cuts, probably more cuts for secondary that are coming up and probably Ms. Jete is sitting over there going, "What are you thinking?" One of the questions I had, did we, did, I believe it was maybe Marburg that came forward and said that they were going to waive fees for a year and that was to the tune of, do you, I think it was something like $80,000, is that correct?
I've never seen the documentation.
You haven't seen that yet?
Coming to the board admit, the second board.
Okay. Because I'm wondering if we got one-off donations for us to even use those, if they weren't tied to something in particular, to use the, to fund this for one year and see how students feel about it. And we, I know from all the research that if you take these tests, if you, if you do a preliminary, you will do better on the, you, there's over a 50% chance that you'll do better on the SAT or the ACT when you take the final test.
There is some problems with that research. And the main problem with that research is selection bias. And so, yes, that's, the research does say that, but I'm not convinced that it's as strong a result as they're quoting in the literature.
So we'd be able to see that over two years in our district if we, if we.
Yes, we could go backwards and take a look, right.
That would be, that would be interesting to see.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. And I apologize. I was so worried that I was going to do that, that I think I just put it in my head. Any other questions or comments for, on this item?
I have one thought. There are a number of families that are already paid to have their students take the PSAT in the 11th grade. And I don't know how you could mandate it universally and say, had there be, on the basis of need, it's, the fee is waived, but for those families who would pay normally, I guess you, that would be really hard to do if it's universal, right?
That would not be my, me to answer that, but I guess you could try and do some kind of a fundraising to pay for it. I don't know about that.
Well, I'm saying the district would pay for those families who qualify.
I understand, the fundraising to reimburse the district, I don't know.
I'm just thinking we're going to lose money that people would, by paying for those people who would normally be paying anyway.
And lots of students take it, as you know, in the 10th grade to prepare for the 11th grade, and they would need to pay for their PSAT because they would be getting the free ACT at school.
They would pay for their free PSAT in 10th grade and then if, in 11th grade, we would pay for it. But I just think that there are terrific benefits for it being universal and not breaking it out this way. I think, I think our community would really appreciate that.
I, I'm sorry.
And so if we start down this path, which I agree is a good idea, then it's, it's hard to rescind that in successive years.
That's true. If you notice that, I did say that the counselors overwhelmingly preferred the ACT Plan. What might happen is that if we were to give it universally for both the PSAT or PSAT and the ACT Plan, we may get enough feedback to choose to just do one or the other for the following year. I don't, I don't know.
For just the 10th?
For just the 10th grade, yes. This is all for just the 10th grade.
Dr. Noel?
What is the demographic distribution of these scores typically?
The demographic distribution? It's the distribution of the school.
For a, for a given school and a given test, what, what does the demographic spread look like? Are socioeconomically disadvantaged students low scores on these tests?
Oh, well, yes, you would find that for pretty much any test.
And this would make it universal, does that mean obligatory?
It's opt-out.
That would not be my decision.
I would assume it'd be an opt-out program where you'd automatically do it, but of course, you could always decide not to do it.
I'm concerned because it's, I see, I see in this the potential for another divide, whether it be by voluntary opting, voluntarily opting out. And what I don't see in here is any, and maybe this is not intended in this particular package, but this, to me, should be embedded in a policy that provides assistance to socioeconomically disadvantaged students so they can be competitive on these tests. Otherwise, you have just one more way in which to say, "Oh, well, there go those kids who are doing the PSAT and going to Harvard and here we are," and, you know, kind of like, "Well, dumb us, smart them." I don't, that does not sound really healthy to me unless we put this in a broader context that includes a lot of support that would take out the potential for this kind of division.
I know that the way the ACT Plan that our counselors have talked about is, been used is to do actually, well, to do something different in that. It's to actually help the students who haven't been taking the right courses or show potential and to help them get into the right courses. I know that that's one of the purposes stated in the ACT Plan is to help minority students and low achievers.
But it doesn't help to. But it doesn't help to take a test and then blow it.
Well, that's why it's given in 10th grade and, you know, so to prepare them for the junior test and for.
In 10th grade, it doesn't help to take a test and blow it.
I understand that.
Ms. Parker?
But I think that that is, the, the whole purpose of this is that you take, you, obviously it's not just the tests, there, there are, if it's universal access, there's, there's other things coming with it, including having resources online to, to, to training, because I know that they have those. But this is practice so that you do better when it's time to take the test and you, almost at any four-year, you're going to have to take this, either the ACT or the SAT. So by doing this, we are laying the foundation for our weaker students to do better on the final test as juniors and seniors before they apply to four-year college.
It, it fit my family well and my kids did okay.
Dr. Noel?
Got into Berkeley and UCLA. I just raised questions about this in a broader socioeconomic context.
Ms. Deacon?
I, I actually, when I was pondering this, I was concerned about some of the issues Dr. Noel is raising because there's going to be a spread in these scores and we don't want another measure of, you know, of, of, not high success. But on the other hand, I think Mrs. Parker makes a good case that if, if you want to go to a four-year institution, you're going to take the test later. So why not start taking it sooner and become familiar with the testing format and, and feel comfortable by the time you take it as, as a junior in the spring or, or senior in the fall. We do offer, don't we, preparation courses in the high schools in the evenings for SATs? We used to and it, and they, they weren't expensive and I think that some of them were underwritten by the schools. I, I just remember these nights where people would go for, for SAT prep.
We do and we have test companies coming in, giving practice tests for free. We also have those companies wanting to provide test preparation at a steep charge, although they do provide scholarships. In this case, Santa Barbara High School would be participating in a norming study and in that case, it would be universal at the school. They would schedule it during the school day for norming purposes. So since it's scheduled during the school day, that, that really facilitates everyone taking it. However, they would not want students to be involved in any sort of test prep as a feed into a norming study. And that's an interesting dilemma because certainly if we want students in the future to be taking these tests, well, maybe that becomes its own pilot project. But if we want students taking these in the future, we need to, to build that support so that they feel that they can be successful.
I just, yeah, a comment real quick. And that is, that it goes back, I think, to what we were talking about earlier, whether it's diagnostic or practice. Because once the student takes either the ACT plan or the PSAT, the student has acquired practice, which then helps that student to do better in subsequent tests. Because they now have facility with the test format. But the student also then would get feedback on the areas in which this, that student has weaknesses. Now, I'm not sure, I, I, I mean, I would be interested in looking at what that is telling us, so what that tells us at the school site, for example, is that the student's regular educational process hasn't given them all the skills or, or information that the student needs in order to do well on this test. So rather than adopting a whole new program that's intended to help the student to do well on a particular test, I would be more interested in looking at ways in which we provide support for students doing well academically, period. And to, to look at how these preliminary tests can help us to identify those areas in which students are having difficulties.
It's kind of interesting because Dr. Cynthia White and I both are involved in testing. I'm more involved in the large-scale state and federal and in the KC and stuff like that. And so what you're going into now is Cynthia's, Dr. White's territory, which is preparation and tutoring or whatever goes along with preparing students curriculum-wise. So yes, I agree, but she's not here tonight to, to, to talk about that aspect of these tests.
One, one last comment and then I'll give, give it to you, Dr. Noel. Given our, our limited resources, I'm less desiring of spending our precious resources on teaching students how to score well on a particular test than I am in providing support for students acquiring broad knowledge and academic skills. So I, I'm hoping that there's some way we can kind of combine the two to, to, to really get the best bang for our bucks. Dr. Noel?
Yes, I, I certainly subscribe to the views that you just expressed. I wanted to ask a factual question. What percentage of our kids apply to four-year institutions? See, I, I mean, part of me is, hey, I'm, I'm for high, high achievement, everybody should go to UC system or better. But we also have a very substantial part of our college-going population that can't afford, even if they have the grades, can't go, to go out of town because it costs money to, for housing, but who don't have the grades can go to City College. And, and here's where I think my views absolutely coincide with Mrs. Cordero's views, that, well, if we're going to spend any money for those kids, it's, this test is a little premature. It's a, they, they have a lot to do before they're ready to, to start taking this even diagnostically.
I, I don't have the stats on that, I, I just don't have the numbers on that.
We, we, I mean, City College has a bunch of tests that tell, that tell where kids are in math and English and placement tests, which give lots of information of, of formative kind for, for, to guide instruction. And I, I just want to see a bigger context that, that certainly allows and supports this kind of testing and practice, or however you want to call it, for the kids for whom it is not problematic, but does something for the kids for whom this is a, in some sense, a part of the cultural divide that we have on some of our campuses. There are those kids who are into this and who are known to be into this and who are going to college, but then we have an awful lot of kids who aren't. And it, and at least I'm told when I go to Santa Barbara High School, that it's basically two schools. And, and I'm, we're, I think both Ms. Cordero and I are talking about the other school.
One, one second because I just want to clarify my position. I, I, I hope, maybe, maybe I wasn't clear. I am all for giving the students the practice. My concern was where we spend our resources to follow up on that practice. Because I absolutely believe that taking the test as a practice does give students an advantage when they take the actual SAT or the ACT. So I would like all of our students to have that practice. My concern was where are we going to, how, what are we going to support a, as they do that? Are we going to support more test preparation or are we going to support the diagnostic use of that, of that data to help develop their academic skills?
Yes, because I, I wanted to chime in on that because my, my hope in going forward with one of these options is that we would be removing some of that divide between the schools. I don't think it's, I think that there is too much decision-making now by the powers that be at certain schools about who's going to, you know, who they think is going to be going to a four-year college. And, and students who take themselves off the list. I mean, again and again, we hear of counselors stepping in with seniors who have the grades and didn't realize or didn't think that they did or that they could and they had never taken the SAT, they'd never taken the ACT. And that's why I think it's so important for us to just make it universal in terms of the, a practice test. So that then you know that if this, everybody knows, this is what you do to go into college, here's the practice test, I can make some decisions about which one works best for me. And to me, this is really about trying to bump up our numbers of underrepresented students going straight into four-year colleges. Yes, there are going to be those that decide on a community college or vocational training or other, you know, there'll be a variety of issues. But I want to be sure that we try to remove some of the barriers that are currently in place. What I would like to see is just a one-year pilot program and a one-year pilot program that is funded with donations that we have coming in. And, you know, I'm particularly thinking of that Marburg donation, but there may be something else that Ms. Chute can identify. And, but I think that there are a lot of questions, there, there are a lot of interesting questions around this that, that we could analyze after watching it for a year and then into the following year. Seeing, did this bump up the number of students that go ahead and take the ACT and the SAT? Does it improve scores? Does, you know, it, there, there are a wide variety of, of, of questions that could be answered over time with it. But I'd like to go ahead and make, and I just want a little clarification on point number five. It says ACT plan for all 10th graders and the PSAT for all 11th graders.
Yes, I, I put that there that way because I had not thought that anybody would want to, let's see, I.
Yeah, nobody's going to want.
I had not put down the PSAT and the ACT plan for all 10th graders, both tests for all 10th graders. But what I think you're suggesting, suggesting is both plans for all 10th graders.
I was not suggesting it for all 10th graders. I was saying, look, let's look at the 10th grade cohort and the 11th grade cohort. One of the questions, well, but.
Well, you can do this any way you wish to do it.
Do you have any opinion on that? Do you think it would be better to have 10th graders playing with both at the same time and, and figuring out which one works better and then everybody moves forward that way?
The only opinion I have is that universally, all the counselors have asked that the ACT plan be given to 10th graders because they feel like that's a better test for 10th graders than the PSAT. The PSAT was normed for 11th graders, not 10th graders.
Okay.
If you wish to give the ACT plan for all 10th graders and the PSAT for all 11th graders, I think that's a great plan because then you get access to the national merit and all the scholarships that come with the PSAT for the 11th graders, so.
Okay, well, then my motion will be to, that we approve the purchase next year of the ACT plan for all 10th graders and the PSAT for all 11th graders as a one-year pilot project funded through donation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Noel?
I'd like to move a minute amendment after the $28,000. Pardon me, I'm sorry. Well, I'm trying to just give a reference point, at the end, after the period, okay? I'm just trying to get the syntax right. End to, end to bring back to the board a plan to maximize participation in this testing program by socio-economically disadvantaged students.
I, I guess my question on your amendment is, this is universal, so everybody would.
It's a universal purchase. It doesn't say what is going to be done with it, just going to buy it.
Okay.
That's what, at least that's what number five says, maybe you're going to change that.
It's, well, all, all of them say purchase.
Purchase for all students, it still doesn't say, but it's mandatory.
Okay, so purchase and administer the test, right?
Okay, I'll, I'll, yes, I'll accept that.
Purchase and administer.
Purchase and administer.
Well, in that case, I simply, I withdraw my motion, I will simply vote against it. I mean, that, that implies it's mandatory. Do I understand that correctly?
Okay, so per, approve the purchase and I think we would have to say an administration for next year, we can't say administer. I think administration. Ah, yes, okay. So we move approve.
Yeah.
Purchase and administer next year or for next year, et cetera.
I'm going to say for 2010, 2011.
Okay. Okay, so.
Just to refine my motion.
Okay, so purchase and administer.
The ACT plan for all 10th grade students and the PSAT for all 11th grade students.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a clarification, we have a second, we've had discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries three, one.
Can I just?
I would just like to add because I, I think our discussion centering around the, what we do with the results was really important.
And I think that we all want to ensure that, that we take these results and use them to enhance the, both the knowledge and, and the future success of the students in.
I, I, my comment.
Okay.
Explaining my vote is simply that I, I think that we have taken a step toward further dividing our campuses into two cultures.
Okay. Item E2, we move on with the approval of lease, lease-back construction delivery method for the Ealing Center for Engineering Education and approval of amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Santa Barbara School Districts and the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy Foundation.
Well, this is quite an exciting point in this process. Dave Hat Young, our Director of Facilities and Operations, will introduce this topic.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. This has been an exciting project and it's starting to come to a milestone where we're almost ready to, to break ground in hopefully a short period of time. The foundation has done excellent job in, in raising funds. They are basically there and Mr. Mayrose, I've asked him to be here tonight because he's done a lot of the research in this. Carl and I have, have attended numerous conferences where there's been different topics for facilities. And one of the topics has been the lease, lease-back method for delivering a construction project. One of the presenters, there's, there's been different presenters at conferences. One of the presenters has been the law firm of AALRR and we've heard their presentations, we've heard other presentations. Both Carl and I have had discussions about this would be a great project, try this delivery method. We've given you information in the board brief, we've given you information in, in this packet. And I can provide a lot of information, but I'm not the expert at answering questions. So we've asked tonight Patrick Gunn from this law firm to be here. Patrick's here, Carl's here. Patrick has a short PowerPoint. I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak to this. I'm sure the board has numerous questions, hopefully between the three of us or the four of us, along with the foundation, we can answer any questions that you have. And then the foundation would like to give a brief update on their fundraising activity as part of this presentation also, just a, a one-minute PowerPoint presentation. And so with that, let me introduce Patrick Gunn.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Hat, yeah, can I just, I just want to clarify our timing here. We have 25 minutes assigned to this item. Do you, how long do you anticipate the presentation part of it taking?
Five.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
We, we figured there'd be a lot of questions.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis, representatives of the foundation, staff and council and members of the public. My name is Patrick Gunn and I'm a partner with the law firm, Vatkinson-Andelson. We're a statewide law firm specializing in educational services, most importantly tonight, for construction and facilities. I've been doing school law in construction for 20 years now and as Dave points out, lease, lease-back is an increasingly popular delivery method that's talked about throughout the state at conferences of all sizes, from AXA to CASBO to CASH and others. The lease, lease-back process, before I get into the statute and the legalities, is essentially this. If it pleased the board, you would authorize a series of leases. The first lease, a site lease, whereby your district would lease the site to a builder. And by way of a facility's lease, you, the builder would then sublease the property back to your district. And you would pay for the construction of the improvements through the sublease. And at the end of the payments for the. And at the end of the payments for the construction and associated rental payments, the leases would expire and title to the improvements would vest entirely in the district. One of the benefits is, as payments are made throughout the lease process, title to those improvements vests in your district in case of any dispute. I've never had one, and I've done many, many lease, lease-back transactions. One of the primary benefits of this process, in addition to picking a builder with demonstrated competence, is the fact that you get a fixed price and you get a set delivery date, and projects consistently come in on time and on budget, if not on time or ahead of time and on budget. I've already addressed the fact that the leases expire and the properties return to you title at the end of the leases. And so there's no concern. The title interest during the course of the leases is only that, a leasehold interest. The fee of state, true ownership in the land rests in your district at all times. Key features of the process, there are no bidding requirements, and I would emphasize no formal bidding requirements. Again, if it pleased the board, you can impose whatever requirements you would like. What we often recommend is that you have your builder conduct an informal bidding process, and if you'd like, they can comply with the same statutory requirements of Public Contract Code 20111, with the one exception being, since those contracts would then be awarded by the builder, you don't have to take the lowest common denominator, often referred to as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. In fact, the builder can take the best of the subcontractor trade bids that are received. You get to negotiate the contract not only with you and your selected builder, but the selected builder can negotiate the trade contracts. If they get a bid in, they can sharpen their pencils and bring in the number where they need to bring them in. You can rely on a variety of selection criteria. In the materials that Mr. Hetjung provided to you, some of which are a presentation summary that I did elsewhere, but the cover page summarizes that you can pick the builder on demonstrated competence and based on goodwill with your district, which is very important. And those are criteria that are very, very important in selection. As I look at them, do they have the experience to do the type of job? And especially in the case of an engineering academy or a performing arts theater or something that's very unique, I think it's very prudent to take a builder that has experience in that. You can require recommendations from prior clients, whereas in the hard bid context, you cannot entertain that. If they're responsive and they're responsible, you've got to take them regardless of whether or not they've ever done a project worth $4.1 million of construction cost before. If someone is the low bidder and they've done a job for $500,000, well, you get to reject all bids and go out again, or you get to take the risk of this builder cutting their teeth on your project. Not advisable in my experience. So, the variety of selection criteria that you can select and implement is very, very important. The next comment goes to, lease-back is not only a construction vehicle, but it is often considered a finance mechanism if you need it. But the mere fact that you do not have a financing mechanism requirement, in this case, I understand the funding is all available through the foundation's good efforts, then you don't have to worry about that. Finally, the guaranteed maximum price is what you negotiate, and this brings up an important consideration. People will often comment that, whoa, if you go lease, lease-back as to hard bid, you don't know if you're paying more for your project than you probably are. Well, my simple retort is this, your engineers estimate, your construction budget doesn't change. You factored, you built that before you ever decided which way to go, and if you don't get a GMP that's within your budget and within your engineers' or architect's estimate, you don't go that way. But the good news is, they always come in within it. I haven't seen one go over yet. And if you, if there is a number that's higher, you can negotiate it, or you can throw it out. And the step in the process that I start this process with, with a pre-construction services agreement, so your builder and your architect work together, and the builder can go through the plans to identify any deficiencies early before you're entering into a construction contract, to identify any problems, have the architect address them. By doing that, you avoid the risk of change orders in the middle of the job because of lack of coordinated plans, pieces missing from the plan, the builder not understanding something. I understand that you've got a great relationship with the builders that are up for consideration for this job, so I don't think that'll be an issue. But when you've paid a builder pre-construction services dollars for that, and they haven't identified a problem in their report, or they say, better yet, these documents are fine and thorough and they're buildable, in the middle of the job, they're in a pretty tough spot if they then say, gee, I don't understand this, there's something missing here. At that point, we say, get to work and finish it. Your GMP is X, your delivery date is Y, and we also have a completion liquidated damage clause here if you don't. So, you have hammers in your tool bag that you can use if you need to, but I've never been in that position in the numbers and numbers of projects I've done. So, a good benefit in the guaranteed maximum price, pardon me. Here's the statute that provides for it, and I've emphasized the key words, without advertising for bids, it's entirely legal. As the materials you have before you from my prior presentation summarize, years ago there was a challenge at the state level, but that's all been silenced. The statute is clear, you can do it without advertising for bids, so it is entirely legal. But again, you can, if you so choose, require that your builder get a minimum of three or five trade, bids per trade, et cetera. It's very important. Finally, I've included a list, I guess I'd go back, proven delivery method, my comments, I can give you as much experience as you'd like to hear about. I haven't had a single lease, lease-back project end up in litigation yet. Very, the way I've said it to staff is, at the end of a job now, I get to go to grand openings and celebrations with the community and the kids and the teachers and the board, and be happy, and not get a big fat binder of a claim because a builder saw things before they ever even bid your job, but didn't tell you until they got the contract, and then pulls out their list of change items that they want to negotiate. And finally, here's a representative list of some districts, but I emphasize the asterix that goes partial. And to be fair, I've listed many of these districts I've represented, many I have not, and this is not all-inclusive. Districts from the northern border to the southern border, I've done one for San Ysidro down on the border, and all the way north to Corning and beyond Redding, east to Tahoe Truckee, and all over the Bay Area and up and down the Central Valley. So, there are plenty of districts that you can call and ask about if you'd like references that I can provide, I can do that, I can give you names of other individuals that you can call and ask, and then they can give you references if you'd feel more insulated that way. And with that, I'd open it up to questions.
Okay. Did we want to take the questions first, or did we want to have the foundation make a presentation?
They're just gonna give you an update on, basically, where they are with their fundraising because that is part of the schedule, just a minor part of what we're doing today. I don't want to deviate from that because then we may be off topic with the agenda item.
Okay.
But as far as this lease, lease-back method, a part of that is being able to meet the schedule that they have for timeline of when they have their fundraising available, when we go to contract with the state money to have the building completed. And so, we're trying to do things in a manner that's not going to affect that schedule because many of their donors have donated money knowing that construction was imminent and starting. And so, I don't want to, I want to keep that very narrow so we don't go off topic and have a problem with the way that the agenda item is placed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hetjung.
I can do that real quickly, and I would like to say, just for the record, that Pat's law firm did not, Patrick, I'm sorry, Patrick.
It's okay.
Their law firm did not solicit us, we solicited them. At every conference I've ever been to, they have not solicited anybody. They were there solely as giving information along with other firms of the same type, and I don't want you to think that this law firm came calling looking for clients. That's not the way it happened. In fact, Carl and I did research, we talked with a lot of districts, we talked extensively with a lady by the name of Lee Coop, the Director of Facilities for the Vacaville School District, who's been doing this for a number of years and who's been a wealth of information for us also. So, I don't want to, I want to make that perfectly clear.
Okay, can I then entertain questions from the board specifically regarding the lease, lease-back process or other issues around this that might be better directed towards Mr. Gunn? And then we, if we have other questions about the project, to the extent that we can and remain on, on agenda, we'll take those questions. So, do board members have questions for Mr. Gunn? Dr. Noel?
I, well, no, I should, I, my questions are for Mr. Price.
Okay.
I think it's more appropriate to ask these kinds of questions to our own council, no offense intended.
None taken.
The very simple ones. What are the implications for liability, the district's liability, this seems to add a layer, but are we still the deep pockets who someone would come after if there was a failure in the system? Insurance, I guess insurance is part of that question. And then the other, the other branch of my questions has to do with, for failures of contractors to deliver and projects to get hung up. Santa Barbara has a way about this, it seems. Not our schools, not our schools. Where do we stand with regard to that? Or contractors going out of business?
First of all, I want to acknowledge that Mr. Gunn is definitely the expert here, but we were consulted by staff initially with respect to the advisability of going in this direction, as well as the advisability of using Mr. Gunn's firm. And we did our own review. Nathan Rogers was really working on it, talked with Mr. Gunn, looked into some things. So, although my office has never done one of these projects, we have enough information, I think, in order to be able to, I think, answer your questions regarding, really, a due diligence question, which is questions which you're putting to me. I think in any situation, no matter what methodology you use, there's always a potential that the district is going to be seen as a deep-pocket defendant when and if something goes wrong. Under this methodology, there is less of a risk because of the way in which it's structured. So, I think that, if anything, you're safer. In terms of the second question that had to do with the risk of other building entities coming back, contractors and so on, you're definitely safer. Because as Mr. Gunn explained, and I agree with him, the responsibility is much more definitively placed on the shoulders of, in effect, the contractor. And there's much less opportunity for wiggling, turning around and placing either blame and responsibility on the district for insufficient documents, or placing or attempting to place on the responsibility, placing responsibility on the district for additional sums due to alleged unanticipated situations that arise, i.e. change orders. So, I think the short answer is that we think that you're better off going in this direction in, among other, for, among other reasons, the very points that you've made. And also, we think that you're better off using Mr. Gunn's firm because of their acknowledged expertise in handling many of these transactions.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Just let me, I'll be done in just a second, Mr. President. Is there any guideline, I've had this discussion with Mr. Hetjung on other occasions about swimming pools, but is there any guideline about what kind of insurance is prudent for us on the contingency that at some point we may be the deep pockets defendant?
Well, again, I don't mean to keep being deferential, but I need to be because he's the expert in the field. But what I do in any situation like this is to, first of all, look and see what our insurance is, because, you know, some potential claims are going to be covered by insurance. Some aren't, straight contract claims aren't, but tort-type claims are. I think our coverage goes all the way up to $50 million in terms of excess coverage, so that's one factor. The size of the project is another factor. And in some instances, an additional important factor is the cost that's going to be added to the project because if you insist on an unreasonable amount of insurance, you're paying for it because it's going to come back. So, you need to do a weighing. But I think that Mr. Gunn would, although we haven't talked about it, be the first to agree that you want a whopping amount of insurance to protect everybody that's involved, including our friends at the foundation. I don't know how much, though, I haven't examined it.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Was that okay?
Ms. Parker?
I can certainly see the benefits of going in this direction with a lease, lease-back. Your documents don't go into a great deal of detail about the concerns of the State Allocation Board and the Office of Public School Construction. What I can see right off the bat is the issue of possibly, you know, if you don't have a competitive bid process, that the public ends up paying more for a project. I mean, I think that we see again and again with the number of change orders that we have, that that is really probably not the case. The one other issue that might, is sort of raising some red flags for me, is the possibility of fraud. If you don't have a bidding process and you have a facilities department that has its favorite builders, how do you guard against too cozy of a relationship getting started? Mr. Hetjung?
If I could jump in, Mr. Mayrose and I and Mr. Price, we've had some discussions on this, and we would definitely have a contractor in mind for this, but in future, if we did other lease, lease-back projects, we talked to other facilities directors, the first thing they say is, you don't always want to use the same contractor for each project. You want to use two or three different contractors, especially if you have a bond issue, you have multiple projects. That way, they're always in competition with each other as far as knowing they have to deliver on time a quality project for the right price, or they won't be considered for future projects. So, the one thing we would never want to do is select one builder for all of our projects. And I could let the two attorneys comment on that.
But just to follow up on one of your questions, Mrs. Parker, because I neglected to mention it in answering Dr. Noel's concerns. Among the potential issues are, of course, what you've referred to from the OPC and so on, State Allocations Board. And one of the things that we have talked about is whether or not, like occurs in many cases with bond issues, there should be a validation brought where you file something in the Superior Court that seeks to have the court put its rubber stamp on it that says, this is valid and this is legal. It, nothing is absolute, but it comes as close to closing the door on any kind of challenge, including from the state of California asks, is possible. The question we have is whether or not there would be sufficient time to do that for this project because of the timing of the project, and we're going to be talking about that.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Gunn, did you want to address that comment as, or that question as well?
Yes, if I could. With regard to the SAB and the OPSC concerns, we feel that our materials address them as adequately and thoroughly as they need to be by simply stating that the statute is clear. It says, "Without calling for bids." And the challenges in the legislative history, they said, well, they added this language to the statute. And the legislative history with regard to that change is clear when it said, "We are merely adding this language as a clear statement of the original intent of the statute, not a change in the law." Period. So, by stating that and stating the legislative history that should be reflected in the materials, and if it's not in that conference material, that was, unfortunately, staff got it without consulting me, so I don't know if it's in there, I haven't.
It is in there, and that isn't actually, I mean, my question was really about, I understand that aspect of it, but I was really getting more to the point of why were they raising red flags, not about whether it was.
Public bidding.
Exactly.
They were concerned about public bidding and it being Public Contract Code 20111, and the view on the detractors saying, but you've got to be publicly bid to be legal. And that's why we look to the statute without advertising for bids. So, the statute's clear, and the legislative history, addressing the time it was changed, said, "By doing this, we're not changing the law, we're merely clarifying the original intent from the time it was enacted way back when." So, that was the concern of the SAB, and I think it was from political sources. But it's clearly legal. That's the concern, and I've never, I've never been confronted with the question about concern for fraud of district staff because I think district staff are typically in their position because of demonstrated competence and excellence in what they do. But the fallback I would share with you on that would be, that's a 1090 violation. But the fallback I would share with you on that would be that's a 1090 violation. It would be a conflict of interest, not to mention criminal fraud. And I've never seen that happen. So if there's, well, I'll leave my comments there. And how does the district protect itself against that? I guess they'd say by selecting the right staff.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Ms. Deacon?
If I could make one comment on bidding, there's still bidding going on. It's just not necessarily a public bid between the district and the contractor. There's still, what your contractor does is he solicits bids from all the subcontractors, from all the varieties of different crafts that are, that are, that are part of the project. The contractor is still going to solicit bids. He's going to solicit bids from all the subcontractors. So there is bidding still going on behind the scenes, just as there always is. It's just that once that contractor gets those bids from the subcontractor and we sit down and we talk about the guaranteed price, we're able to also look at those subcontract and say, you know, we've really had a problem with this subcontractor in the past. Maybe you want to talk to this, a different subcontractor and see if they're willing to negotiate the price or give you a little better price. So we have more control over the subcontractors, but there's still bidding going on. There's still, I mean, if plumbing firm A and B come in with a outrageous price, the contractor's not going to use them. He's going to select numbers C. Otherwise, he's not going to have a chance of coming in with near the estimated amount of what we're looking for, for our guaranteed price. So the only bidding, it's not total lack of bids. There's still that process going on.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Deacon?
Mr. Hetjung, you mentioned you had a contractor in mind. Are we talking about local contractors?
With this project, yes.
Okay. Because I do know for some design-build projects in our county, when the builders have been from out of state, there's been some issues with labor and picketing and things like that. So that's definitely something I think we want to avoid. My other question had to do with the minimum standards that a contractor might decide were acceptable in meeting the specifications of a plan. In other words, say that your contractor thought electrical outlets every nine feet met the bill, but in engineering academy and a machine shop, you wanted them every two or three feet. If a dispute was to come up because your, their minimum standards maybe didn't meet our expectations, and some things are not always called out that precisely, is there a dispute resolution process in a design-build scenario?
Well, I'll let Mr. Gunn address that portion of the dispute process. But there's always a dispute process in our contracts that we've always had with our, what we call our front ends, or our standard front-end documents. But as far as your question of standards, those should be covered in the plans and specifications. I expect the contractor to give me every single item that's on that plan built per the specifications, nothing less, nothing more, per that contract. That's what he signed up for. He's in the business to make a fair profit. We're not, we're a public agency. We want him to give us exactly what he contracted for, for exactly what he said it would cost, nothing more, nothing less. So as far as the type of electrical outlets, we've been very fortunate in this progress that we've gone through in that the members of the Academy Foundation have also taken part in plan review, along with the district and the architect. And there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of back and forth on, what about this? What about this? I don't see this. Where is it? And so, so far, I think we've had a very thorough plan review because of that relationship. It's been a benefit both to the architect and the district, and I believe it's going to make for a more successful project. They've had some good expertise on their side, working with us.
And I believe that. I believe the plans are great. And I just want to make sure that, that when we negotiate, you know, a fixed price, basically, that you get exactly what those plans call for.
Mr. Gunn, did you want to comment, or did that, did that cover?
No, I think Mr. Hetjung's response was entirely accurate. And it's primarily a design issue, but that is also the benefit of having the builder in a pre-construction capacity go through them and identify additional deficiencies. But that's entirely a contract issue. And our documents definitely include a dispute resolution process, not just a provision. So we're protected there. And to go back to Ms. Parker's comments, or Mrs. Parker's comments, we also include in our documents many of the same elements that you would include in a hard bid set, including a noncollusion affidavit. And contractors are also subject to liability for the California false claims if they bill you for something that they haven't done, or they overbill you. So you have many of the same tools, and frankly, in my opinion, more than you do in the hard bid context. In addition to the whole selection process, you're not hard bidding selection of your prime builder, but you can use an RFQ/RFP process or interview several of them. And again, go on demonstrated competence. That is by far the best protection you can have, without exception. Because, you know, by references from other people that have done work with them, I think that stands to reason it's much more protection than a hard bid, low number.
Thank you. I think that concludes our questions at this point. So could we maybe take the next three minutes? Thank you.
Well, you know, every time I come here, I have to give you an update. So first, I want to introduce two board members that you haven't met yet here. We have Gary Simpson, who is in charge of our corporate partnerships. And we have five new corporate partners this year who gave $5,000 and up. So it's been very successful. He has a whole committee. John Martinez is the head of our building group. And once this project gets going, he's going to be meeting with Dave and the builder once a week. I think, you know, the more eyeballs on something like this, the better it's going to be. And they, as Dave said, they've been very active up to this point, and it's gone really well. Okay, so this is this year's team winning in Los Angeles. Okay. So the summary of the robotics season, it was the fifth robot, so it's Penguin Bot 5. In San Diego, they took second place, and they won the Motorola Quality Award, which is a judges' award for the best robot at the competition. It's unrelated to winning the game. In Los Angeles, they took first place in the competition, and they won the Engineering Inspiration Award, which is sort of a community service award for the team, because they did a lot of outreach in LA and before they got there. Those two awards, winning first place and also winning inspiration, either one can take you to the international competition in Atlanta. So in Atlanta, they did quite well in their field. I think they lost in the semifinals. And then they won the Motorola Quality Award for Best Robot in the World. And that's two years in a row, which is also a first. They're the first team ever to do that twice in a row. So here, they're very happy in Atlanta. And I want to show you, does this have a pointer? See that? The youngest member of the team. That's, that's Aleah. Okay, highlights. As Dave said, we're actually ready to go. We have the money in the bank, according to the MOU, to get this project started. So as soon as, yeah, it's been, it's been really wonderful. So as soon as you guys pick a contractor, we're ready. I mean, we're ready now. So I just want to give you some highlights since I was here in January. Some of these are not new gifts, but they're gifts that have been increased. So the Tabasco Foundation increased their gift from $75,000 to $100,000. You heard about, we got a challenge grant from Jeff Ealing's of $100,000, and we're $13,700 short of getting there. I'm hoping to wrap this up very quickly. Diana and Simon Rab increased their gift to $50,000. The Robert T. Hubbard Fund increased its gift to $50,000. And we got $25,000 from the Outweight Foundation of Santa Barbara. So we've had a really wonderful season since January. And just another little piece of update is our outreach program, which is being founded by the Lounsbury Foundation, has been, I think, a great success. We have paid for, as you know, this is money that is going towards the avid classes that are at the junior highs. So we've paid for four field trips. Santa Barbara Junior High spent a day at UCSB, and also went to Los Angeles for the Science Museum and visited USC. Galita Valley and La Colina both took their students to Cal Poly at San Luis. We've spent $1,100 for materials for these classes. We've got 15 tutors, each putting two hours per week in of tutoring. To date, that's over 700 hours of tutoring. I just want to say that the real success of this program has not been the math and science tutoring, but it seems that these students are working, our tutors who are UCSB students and DP seniors are doing a great job as guidance counselors and, you know, advising the students on what classes they can take in high school and showing them their college applications as they were working on them. So there's just been a lot of really wonderful interaction there. And we want to expand the program. The teachers are really happy with it. So we're going to continue and do more, I think, in the next academic year. So that's, that's the summary for the activities of the foundation and the academy. I just want to comment a little bit on the lease-leaseback. You know, we told Mr. Hetjung that we had the money, we were ready to go. And he and Carl had been working on preparing the documents for this lease-leaseback for you to look at. It's really your decision. It's not for us to advocate what type of method you use to pick a contractor. But we have agreed to facilitate your decision by paying upfront the legal fees for anything that you decide to do. So thank you. And we're here, we can answer questions too, if you want.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions on, for, if we have any further questions, I just want to remind the board that our agenda item is specifically for the, to consider the lease-leaseback construction delivery method and whether we should amend the memorandum of understanding to include that. So we can't ask too many questions about the program. We really want to stay focused on the MOU and the lease-leaseback delivery method. So.
The MOU, as it was written, only allowed for bidding.
Okay.
So section, the section on construction, which is items 12 through 16, in the new version that you got, allow for either.
Great. Thank you.
So it's just open to either.
Thank you. So do board members have questions? Any further questions regarding that aspect?
Well, I just want to express my confidence that this project is in really good hands. And, and part of that confidence comes from the way in which this foundation has conducted its business with us, has really been exemplary in complying with a policy that I think we've made a pretty, a pretty tough policy about fundraising and when projects can go forward. And that, to me, just speaks volumes about the kind of people you are and the kind of organization you've put together, and that what, everything that stands behind these pages is very important to me. I think that's most commendable.
Thank you. I think we all share that feeling.
Absolutely. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the lease-leaseback construction delivery method for the Ealing Center for Engineering Education, and approve the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy Foundation.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. So thank you very much to all who were involved, and we look forward to having quick, quick action on this item. Okay, we can move on to item E3. We're a little behind schedule, so I hope we can keep that in mind. Approval of new template for single plan for student achievement for all non-charter elementary and secondary schools. And this is the third reading.
Dr. White is not with us tonight. Going to ask Robin Swawski, Associate Superintendent for Education, to present this.
Yes, I will. And I have some notes here from Cynthia. And I don't know that I need to give much of a history, but I think you all know that in trying to reduce costs, we decided late, late in the fall 2009, to discontinue the use of those, the online template that you've seen. You've seen the paper copies of it. I don't know if you've seen it online. It was rather costly and enough so. It was 76, a little over 7,600 for the elementary and about 6,800 for secondary annually. So we decided that was a way in which we could reduce some costs. So in January, the principals met to discuss the template. Staff presented a hybrid model, and you have seen some of these templates coming through with the pyramid of intervention component and last year's executive summary. So we've responded along the way to suggestions that you've had. We've met with board members. We've, we've met with Lane Wheeler, the president of our teachers' union. The sites now have gone back, the principals in particular have gone back to the site councils, as was requested, and gotten some feedback on the template itself. And in doing so, we got some interesting responses about just the whole process of developing the, the plan and how site councils interact with that and how, what role they play in the process. So I know that Lane Wheeler has talked a lot about training that the union offers. And I can see from some of those responses that we do need some training. And so we're going to promote that to make sure that the sites really understand and the site councils understand their role. So here with the template, then, it's been reviewed, revised, and commented on, as you know. The elements in the template do meet the state suggested template in following the elements of the mission statement, analysis of the state data, input from parents and staff. And then there are 10 elements that the state template has to have. You know, the analysis of the curricular program. And there's several pieces that always come right up front after the mission statement that you're familiar with seeing. This template has three parts. We've included the executive summary, which would be a narrative, as you, you know, you really liked that in the past, so we're putting that in. It will report how Title I, Title III, EIA, I won't list them all, all of the categorical programs meet the assurances for improving student achievement in reading, language, arts, and math. And then it will show the budget by resource and object, so you can easily delineate how the money's been spent and what, how it's linked to the goals. The reporting format of the categorical expenditures is a three-tiered pyramid. And that part was new. We had our pyramid of interventions, but this is really showing how the categorical funding is used in a tiered, a tiered manner. This was really interesting when we met with principals. As they were thinking about their programs and their plan, it was very obvious all of a sudden that they were lacking maybe in a Tier Two type of intervention. And in thinking about those students who are, you know, they're, they need more than just the core program. They need more of the core program in a different way and how they're funding that and that, there's funding for that. And then again, the Tier Three for the most at-risk kids. So the plan, the way it is with that tiered piece with the categorical funding, shows how it aligns with our LEAP, our Local Educational Agency Plan. It shows how the plan meets the needs of students in both the Tier Two and Tier Three. It also describes how Tier One can be supported as well. And it also shows how those categorical requirements for English learners and the different particular types of funding like Title III and EIA, how that is linked up to the, the, excuse me, the goals.
What page are you referring to?
I'm referring to notes that describe how, how it's put together and why it's put together. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. And then I'm going to just do a little what it is and what it isn't, very briefly. This template is a way to report information on how the schools will use their categorical funds to meet the assurances of the categorical funds in order to improve student achievement, in order to meet AYP and API. It will report goals, actions, people or committees responsible for implementing the actions, and it will define how the action will be measured and how it will be funded. It's not serving as a monitoring system. That's not what it's intended to do. But rather, the tool is a reporting document that, that will delineate what will be monitored. Dr. Noel did present, in one of the meetings that we had with him in a subcommittee, a format that we could use for kind of ongoing monitoring. So we wanted to share that framework with the site councils. They could choose to do that, and principals could use that. There's various ways that they monitor and share with their site councils. The template also is not a site council training tool, nor should it be defining how site council runs. Each site council has their own bylaws and outlines the roles and responsibilities. So that's kind of what it is and what it isn't. It's a reporting tool. So our recommendation at this point is to approve the tool so we can move forward. We will have to come back with a timeline because we're behind now from what we originally set forward to have the draft approved in June. We won't be there yet. So I'm ready to entertain questions?
Okay. I have a really, really quick question, I think. The executive summary. I just want to know. to know, because, well, is the executive summary going to still be a narrative that includes just sort of an overview of the details?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will. And it'll be followed by the data analysis and then the funding pieces and the, you know, the goals and objectives.
Okay, but the executive summary will not be in chart form?
No, it will not. It will be a narrative. That's what you requested, right?
Yes, and I just wanted to make sure, because I wasn't sure I was reading that correctly in here. Okay. Do we have, oh, we have one public comment. Okay. Mr. Lain Wheeler?
My apologies for not being here sooner. Lain Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I was at San Marcos High School, watching my daughter be honored, along with a couple of her hundred of her other friends, for community service and scholastic excellence. It was a pleasure to be there, and I do apologize for being late.
Well, congratulations to your daughter.
Thank you very much, and I'll pass that on to the teachers and staff at San Marcos and all the students that they've educated. It's going to be a nice graduation. I would like to say how much SBT appreciates the comments that Ms. Sowoski brought forward with this. We appreciate the collaboration with the district in terms of, we believe, rectifying some of the critical issues in this piece. She summed it up pretty well, that this is not to dictate the direction or policies of school site councils, but to be just a wheel on that wagon. Training is necessary, needs to be ongoing, and it is really a mandated activity of school site councils. And I want to express how much this needs to happen, at least on a minimum of every other year, and it should probably happen, depending on the change in the constituency of the panel, almost every year. Have to remember, at junior high and high schools, where students are going to be on site councils, those students could change on a yearly basis. Oftentimes, parents change and the staff will change on a yearly basis. So when staffs can, when school site councils can come up and start repeating the frames of the training, almost like the Rocky Horror Picture Show, we know they probably have had enough training, but until that point comes, we can't express enough how much that training needs to happen. CTA and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association has made an ongoing commitment to provide, at no cost to the district, training for school site councils. I was very proud that we were able to bring it to McKinley in both English and Spanish format, so that it was very inclusive. Talked to those families afterwards. They were very much empowered and did not know what their roles on school site council should be. So we will continue to commit to bring in that training on an ongoing basis. We just need a few weeks to make sure we line up staff, and we will have those materials and presenters there in a very easy-to-use format, and we hope that that will help drive this process forward. So thank you to you, Robin, for making those corrections, and the board. We ask you to go ahead and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Ms. Parker?
The board has always had very strong opinions about the single plan and the format for the single plan. And every year, we have lots of comments about tweaking it. And so I understand how this ended up in front of us. This is about, I think that this is actually about the third variation that I've seen in the past four or five years. In the past, it hasn't come to us for approval. And this is my concern. The board's role is to set policy for the district, to set direction, and we have a whole range of things that we're supposed to do. I really, I'm not going to, like, not approve this because it's in front of us, but I don't see it as our role to approve a form. Yes, to give lots of input on the form. We have lots of inputs on lots of different forms, safety plans, I could imagine. I see things all the time where I know that I'm going to be sending an email off to Dr. Sarvis because I think this needs tweaking, but for us to be here and actually having spent a number of agenda minutes on it both this time and in previous meetings, I really don't see that as our role. I just don't. So my concern here is that if there's like a tweak in a year or two that you think needs to happen, that every time, it's going to be coming back to us, and I hope that this is a one-off.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Deacon?
Can I just ask a quick question? And I think it's, this is probably a no-brainer, but this will be a PDF format that they can input on the computer, right? And the categories can be elongated or stretched if they have more content to put in.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we're trying to make it as short and concise as possible.
Right, right. Exactly. No, I want it concise, too. But, I mean, some of these columns are so narrow, you could fit, like, two words in them, so I just wanted to make sure this was workable that way. Thanks.
Okay. Do we have, oh, Dr. Noel?
I want to disagree with Mrs. Parker in as friendly a manner as possible. I don't see this as out of bounds for the board at all. Every year, we are presented, the board is required to, and is presented with information about the past expenditure of, the results of those expenditures of, and the future use of categorical funds. That information comes to the board usually in a way that many of us find either not as useful as it might be or even not useful at all. So that we should be assertive about how information is presented to us. It seems to me it's totally in order. And so I'd like to be assertive. Okay. I think, and if I understand you correctly, Ms. Sowoski, you're taking the reporting, a reporting back-to-the-board loop out of this process, or did I misunderstand you?
No, not at all. No, the plans will come to you.
I'm talking about, okay, the plans will come to us and we'll approve them. And then next year, we'll get a report and we'll get a new plan and approve it. I really miss something in mid-year, and I'd like to, and I miss it as a board member. How are they doing? Are they doing anything about what they told us they were going to do? But most importantly, I think it's important for them to understand that mid-year, they need to prepare something for the board to indicate that they are, in fact, making progress on the things that they have said they're going to do.
So that's a request, then, to have a mid-year report based on, from the schools?
I'm sorry, because I'm just a little concerned that that may be beyond the scope of our agenda item, which was to-
Well, I have it written right on this form here in-
Well, which is to discuss the template, not necessarily-
Monitor, checkpoint, and timeline. It seems to me that's well within bounds.
So you're recommending that that be, that that-
Yeah, monitor, checkpoint, and timeline, that there be, that, to me, that means monitor, checkpoint, and timeline, information for the board.
But it's already in the form. You're not suggesting a change to the form. You're not suggesting a change to the form?
No, no, that's what that means, but it's not clear. And that's, I mean, maybe I misunderstood Ms. Sowoski, but I did not hear that in what she said.
That's typically not been done.
That's right, and that's been one of the problems. I've heard this, I've heard other board members say it. They're, okay, here we are again, and if people make these glowing promises of all the things they're going to be doing this year, and, okay, next year, we'll go through this same ritual again. And I find that less than satisfactory as a way of guiding policy.
Okay, but, Dr. Noel, just so that we, so that I feel a little bit safer about staying on the item, staying on the agenda, can you discuss that in the context of the template rather than the process?
Well, it's awfully hard, it seems to me, to have an intelligent discussion of the template without referring to the single plan and the way in which the board uses the information, Mrs. Cordero. Maybe you can do that, but I have a lot of difficulty with that.
I guess the question-
May I go on and make a couple more comments, then we'll have this, then I'll be quiet and you'll be happy.
Certainly.
All right. I don't know what funding means, but there's a separate page on the back of this template that details the budget. And what I'm asking is whether funding aligns, that's the second to the last column on the right, whether funding aligns expenditures with that detailed budget sheet. When you're, so we're looking at a page here that says-
I see what you're saying in the page.
Language Arts Action Plan. It's an action plan. There's one for math, there's one for language arts, there's one for English learners, et cetera. While I'm reading the action plan, I come across the right, it says funding. Then I go back here, when I'm through with all the action plans, and I get this budget summary.
Right.
Will that be aligned in such a way that I, as a board member, can look at that and say, oh, uh-huh, and that adds up to that?
It should be, if it's done correctly. It lists the source and the amount, and it should all line up back here on the back sheet so that the amounts all line up.
Okay. So that's intended. Okay. Last point. You say that this is not a school site council training tool.
That's correct.
Lain has, Mr. Wheeler has underlined something that I agree with, that training is a terribly important part of this. When I look at action steps, okay, I understand intervention programs, and I'm relating this to the conversation of that committee. Action steps is a detailing, okay? Is there any manual or other kind of document that goes to the site councils to train them on how to fill out column three?
Action step timeline and the action steps? Yes, absolutely. That's part of the training. When you-
I'm asking, part of the training. Is someone going to go in and wing it, or is there a document that they can read and take home and study?
There are state documents that we've used in the past. There are documents that-
District document.
Oh, district.
For this template, for action steps.
No, no. You mean that accompanies this template right now? Not specifically?
There's no instructions on how to fill out this template.
Well, it follows what we've been using all along, so we don't, actually, we don't really need that.
Well, I've never seen, well, maybe that's what's wrong with what we've been doing all along, because I've never seen any detailed steps of action plans with timelines. And that's what this says. Action, steps, action timeline. See?
Well, I would say I think those have been in some of our previous plans, and that is part of the training that SPTA has and its training that we've had. It's training on SMART goals. It's training that is on the CDE website that we've used. There's lots of training that talks about how you set goals, and we've used multiple-
But no training, there's no training manual that site council members can take home and study to prepare for. There is one.
Yes, there is. That's what Lain Wheeler has, that's what they've been using, the materials that he has with SPTA. Maybe he wants to speak to that.
If you say there is one, I'm happy.
Yes, there is.
I don't mean to step up and not be called on, but I would like to offer that each time that our CTA representatives do a training, they provide, both in English and/or Spanish, a set of documents that explains the roles, the responsibilities, the way that a school site council runs. I don't know that it has specific instructions on how to fill out this particular form, but that could be a subsequent training that might be offered both either internally or in collaboration with, you know, SPTA and CTA. I'd be happy to, once again, volunteer.
I would like to see, I think you need a training manual for column two and three.
Okay, so that can be taken up later?
Yes, I will.
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion and a comment.
Okay.
First, I will move to approve the new template for single plan for student achievement for all non-charter elementary and secondary schools.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
And then my comments are two. One is that I want to be sure that I'm clear, that I think it's perfectly appropriate, as we're talking about single plans, to come forward with our opinions and our strong opinions about the format. A board-approved document is where I feel like we're crossing the line into something that really is an administrative duty and not a board duty. The other issue is this idea of mid-year reporting on the single plans. That's a huge other discussion.
I agree.
And I want to be sure, that is a board discussion to have, and I want to be sure that we have it. So I would hope that maybe when we're talking about future agenda items, that's something that we can look forward to in the future.
Yes, okay. And just because I haven't made a comment on this, I just want to voice it. I agree with you that I don't think the document needs to be approved by the board, but we will. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I agree with Mrs. Parker, therefore, I'm abstaining.
I thought you didn't agree with her. Okay, so we have an abstention.
It was before the board, Mrs. Cordero. I'm going to talk about it before the board, but I agree, it doesn't have to come before the board.
Okay. Item E4, Approval of Santa Barbara School District Special Education Vision Statement.
Carrie Mills, our Director of Special Education for the Elementary District, will make this presentation. And board, you heard about this at our last update.
Good evening, Dr. Sarvis and board. I'm bringing tonight the vision statement that you heard about at our last board meeting. And just to give you a little background, you've heard about FICMAT for quite a while now, but one of the specific recommendations in the FICMAT report was the recommendation that the district should adopt a board-approved special education vision statement and policy with a commitment that all children receive a free, appropriate, public education. This policy should involve parents, staff, and community. So based on that recommendation, at our last stakeholders' meeting, that was held on April 13, 2010, our subcommittee on the vision statement brought forward two versions of a vision statement, and all of us discussed it, and we took a vote as to which of those vision statements we wanted to recommend to the board. So before you, I'd just like to read it for you. This is the vision statement that the entire group of stakeholders recommends, and it's as follows. "The Santa Barbara School District's vision is that students with disabilities will reach their full potential as members of society. The district embraces parents and guardians as collaborative partners in a process that promotes trust and respect. Each student shall be treated as a unique individual and shall receive a free and appropriate, inclusive education through the use of best practices based on scientific research." So based on our stakeholders' recommendation, I would like to recommend approval of the special education vision statement tonight.
Do we have any public comment? No.
I move to adopt the vision statement as stated in the document and by Dr. Mills.
I'll second that, and so many thanks to the group that worked on it. I know that that was a long process, and wordsmithing can be terribly difficult, and it turned out really, really well. So thank you and thanks to everybody that worked on it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the group. The subcommittee worked really hard on that. So, thank you.
So, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes four zero, and we now have a vision statement. Yay!
May I just comment? I wish everything went that well in special education, but thank you so much.
Bring us more, bring us more.
Well, let's see if we can keep it going, because we are a little behind in the schedule. So we made up a little time on that one. E5, Approval of the Agreement Between Montecito Union School District and the Santa Barbara School Districts to Provide Meals.
Well, we're very pleased to bring this item to the board as well. The board may have noticed, last Friday, we made an error in the agenda, and we had Nancy Weiss attached to special education. She's been so successful, we thought we'd just get her involved in everything. Nancy, would you please come up to the podium? I think the item speaks for itself, but she can answer any questions you have.
Good evening. Yeah, we're pleased to take over the contract for Montecito Union School District next year and their food service program. They're building a kitchen, and we're going to be operating their kitchen sometime in January. The kitchen's going to be built out, and before then, we're going to hopefully get funding for a mobile cafe and work from the mobile cafe at Montecito Union. Not the mobile cafe that we have already in place, ready to go to Santa Barbara High School. In fact, I think we just came to an understanding today about where we're going to park the vehicle. There were some issues about safety and student safety and where we could best use that mobile cafe.
I think that is incredible that you are so trendy.
It was a trend, isn't it? I know. It's amazing.
Mobile, I mean, street food.
Right. Yes. We were at Earth Day, serving up some street food.
And will yours, will it move, will it float? Will it be at different locations at different times, and people have to kind of call and figure it out?
Well, we're already headed up to McKinley for their May Day celebration on May 27th. So it's available for our district to use, but Monday through Friday to enhance the food service program until we can get a kitchen built at Santa Barbara High School. Thank you for being there, Susan, the other day when I was, the three of us were having at Earth Day. They had us do a demo on the food that we were preparing from the mobile cafe that day, and I think people were more interested in the cotton candy or whatever.
The turkeys. The turkeys are a big wow, too.
Yeah, the turkey. I was actually excited about those, so.
Ms. Deacon?
I-
I, well, first of all, I just have to say that I also bought my lunch, and my husband's lunch at the mobile cafe, and it was fantastic. So our students are really in for a treat, and do we have a date for Santa Barbara High then?
Probably next week, yeah, we've already, we're, we're point-of-sale capable, so that means that any student on campus can go anywhere and put their anonymous ID number in and receive a meal. So what used to be only a cash-carrying crowd is no longer that. We can, we can really reach all of our students everywhere. So the mobile cafe is going to be a really interesting opportunity to gain increased participation from those kids that are actually going off campus, they're.
Can I just jump in with a point of order on this?
We're getting off the agenda, I know.
Sorry, sorry.
And we'll just circle back to the fact that you're not using that mobile cafe at Montecito.
That is not the mobile cafe, no.
Right, okay, and so, so then, just so I understand this, so you will have another mobile cafe at Montecito, but once their kitchen is done, you will continue to provide food for the rest of their school year?
Correct.
Okay, and I love the $149,000.
Me too, me too.
Thank you, and, you know, I can just see us taking over Santa Barbara, right?
Well, actually, we are taking El Puente over, too, so that's another really good contract with a lot of kids that are eating under the National School Lunch Program, so, we're looking good.
Okay, so.
Excellent, well, I would like to, there may be some more comments, but I will just go ahead and make a motion now to approve the agreement between the Montecito Union School District and the Santa Barbara School Districts to provide meals.
And I'll second it.
Okay, great.
But if I could go ahead and ask, first of all, where do you hope to get the funding for this mobile cafe for Montecito Union?
With our, with our funds, that we're, with our bottom-line revenue when we close out the books.
Okay, so you think it'll be there for us to do that?
Pretty good, and, and some creative financing, of course.
Okay, and then what would you do with that mobile cafe once?
Park it at Dos Pueblos, which is six months behind schedule now, because Dos Pueblos and San Marcos are also wanting mobile cafes, as they deserve, because those can go to games and theater events, so that's a real revenue generator, and.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, for, for Montecito Union, I mean, I, I have been so impressed with the food that you've been providing in our own district, I think that they will be very happy with what you do for them.
I catered their board, it was very exciting, kill them with food, what can I say?
I think this will be a win-win for both of the districts.
Thank you.
And interestingly, it may be a way to sort of pay off the mobile cafe that then comes back and serves our students, so I think that's terrific. I also have to comment on how trendy it is, and how you might want to consider a sort of a Facebook fan page showing where you are.
Where we're located.
But even, even for Montecito, I think that there, there would be parents that would love to see the menu on Facebook, and there, there are some fun things you could do that way.
Davis, is our IT department ready to handle that?
We're, we're just.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, further discussion? I just want to say that I'm, I'm working on Ms. Weiss to cater our board, so, and we're waiting for that opportunity, too.
I'm here for you, first and foremost, okay?
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Montecito can look forward to great food. That brings us to item E six, approval of new job description for the dean of students.
Board, you saw this before, we had some discussion about this, I brought back some additional information. You see that this is pegged to a salary range and level, which is less than an assistant principal. The purpose for this job description is when you have responsibilities, administrative responsibilities, that don't warrant the, the expertise of curriculum and instruction, nor the salary level that this would provide for that need. The immediate need is at La Cumbre Junior High, where we can't afford a full-time AP, but we can certainly do things having to do with student conduct, attendance, activities coordination, a number of things on the campus that you see on the list of examples of duties. And this is purposely listed as examples of duties because there might be multiple ways to use this position. I've also included at your request, in fact, I just pulled in job announcements for our last assistant principal, Dos Pueblos, this is an old one, and Greta Valley Junior High, so that you can see what we were looking for in those job descriptions. This, oh, this has added Spanish-speaking preferred as well.
I move to approve the job description.
I'll second it, just a quick comment, and last, this is, this is a lot of clarification, because the last time it was, we were talking about it in terms of Greta Valley Junior High, and it was about having, making it easier to split the position, being funded from this.
It still will be easier.
Okay. All right.
I, oh, go ahead, Ms. Deacon.
Will there be times when these will just, it, it won't be like a full FTE, it would be like a .4, .6, or something like that?
That, that may be as well.
That could be, could, could you hold a teaching responsibility and also?
You could hold a teaching responsibility and be a dean, yes.
And have a partial dean position, okay, thank.
I'm just double-checking to see if I missed it somewhere, but I had, I would like to see either under knowledge of or ability to the idea of working with students of diverse backgrounds in a culturally proficient way. And I don't see that idea.
How about ability to?
Great.
Say it again, please.
To work with students or interact with students of diverse backgrounds in a culturally proficient manner.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion, would the maker of the motion accept that revision?
Yes, I'm happy to accept revision, yes.
Okay, great, before we, before we vote on this, we'll take our, our public comment from Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, and it'll be more in the form of a question than a public comment. Just want to remind you all that you've just gone through an extremely, I think, excruciating, and I don't think that's too light of a word, process of reducing the budget, and as all you know, we've cut 25 million in the last three years, so. I would just ask the question that, that before we start bringing additional admin on, that we look for ways to, to cut that, because admin did take a piece of that when we looked at a line item that would have cut APs at secondary institutions. Santa Barbara Teachers Association did not get up and speak in favor of that cut, because we know those are people that, that deal with students on a daily basis and keep the, keep the school running in an efficient and safe manner. And we are not opposed to having properly staffed schools. But we, we felt like we really bared a lot of the brunt of that. Tomorrow, the pain of 58 employees being riffed will be felt right here in this room, as on the day of the teacher, we go through riff hearings. So once again, just before we endeavor to expand that, if this is a piece that eventually fits into a puzzle, and someone's able to make an lateral move or something, that, that seems really logical, but to add on another body, I would just caution you that that's, and I think in this economy, not the most expeditious move, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And I believe that is sort of our intent, so I can call the question, all those, it's been moved and seconded to approve this with the revision. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, that brings us to item E seven, adoption of resolution number 2009 slash 2010 dash 49, Santa Barbara School District's ordering board membership elections.
We're coming up on elections once again, and it is time for the board to notify the public of that fact and with both this agenda item and the next agenda item.
This seems pretty straightforward, are there, is there a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number 2009 dash, slash 10 dash 49, Santa Barbara School District's ordering board member elections.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that moves us on to item E eight, similar item, adoption of resolution number 2009, 2010 dash 50, Santa Barbara School District's policies regarding candidate statements in elections for the Board of Education.
And again, this is in preparation for the election coming up on November 2nd.
I, I would move to go ahead and adopt resolution number 2009, 2010 dash 50, Santa Barbara School District's policies regarding candidate statements in elections for the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, that brings us to item E nine, approval of board action on student discipline. Case numbers 09 dash, or slash 10 dash 32, 09 slash 10 dash 33, 09 slash 10 dash 40, and 09 slash 10 dash 45.
I will move in, in case 09 slash 10 dash 32 to approve the recommended approval of stipulated expulsion abeyance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
I'll move in case number 09 slash 10 dash 33 to rescind the student placement at CDS and uphold the expulsion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
In case 09 slash 10 dash 40, I move to approve the administrative hearing panel's recommendation. Well, I move to approve the suspended expulsion to IAES for the remainder of the semester and placement at La Cuesta next year. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
And in case 09 slash 10 dash 45, I moved to approve the stipulated agreement to one suspended school, your expulsion to an alternate school.
Second. Second, okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero. That brings us to the end of our action agenda, I am going to suggest that we take a brief break here, since we are a little bit behind schedule, and resume in just 10 minutes, okay, 10 minutes. So we will adjourn for 10, convene our board meeting. We had this fantasy, we were going to get out of here a little bit early, but, I don't know, let's, let's, we share the fantasy, okay. Get enough people to share it, maybe we can make it happen. We are now starting our conference agenda with item F one, discussion on release of requests for qualifications, proposals for development of vacant district property, Tatum and Hidden Valley. And Mr. Hetjank is.
Well, this is an item we haven't visited in a while, we'd like to refresh the board as to what the board direction was at the time. We do have two new board members since that time, and we think the time is right to be thinking along these lines. So Dave Hetjank, our director, director of facilities and maintenance, will make this presentation.
Already on the red, I see, I'm over. Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, it's been almost exactly two years since the board gave direction to develop a request for qualifications, request for proposals, and bring it back for board review. In light of economic factors, we've kind of drug our feet, knowing that the timing wasn't really appropriate. We have been the subjects of some inquiries as to what we're planning to do with the property. We've talked to some people in industry who say the time is not right, but then again, some people say the length of time it takes to do things in Santa Barbara, maybe the time is right, some people will tell us the economy's bottomed out, some people tell us that it's, it's starting to bounce back. Real estate, I don't really know what the true situation is, but I do know that the board gave us direction two years ago, and I included in the backup specifically some of those agenda items, so board members that weren't here could go back and, and review those items as part of the backup, as far as the, the board dates, so they could go on the website and pull up the agendas and the attachments and read through there. And I'd been so long that I actually went back and, and looked and listened to the CD of one of the board meetings to make sure that I had these bullet points correct in, in the background, and I did go back, and these were some specific comments from board members at that time, as far as what they wanted to see in any type of proposal. In light of our fiscal condition, I thought it prudent in, in discussion with Dr. Sarvis and Craig Price, that we bring this back, we do a draft, we let the board look at it, we let the board have discussion and make comments, and decide, in light of our financial situation, is this an opportunity for us to gain some money to the general fund based on what a developer may propose as far as a, a project? The good news is that if you do decide in the future to go out with a request for qualifications proposals, that doesn't mean once you receive those requests, you have to do anything. If you don't like any of those requests or proposal, or the requests, developed proposals that you're not comfortable with, or you don't like, or you don't think at this particular time or in the best financial interest of the district or the community, whatever those may be, then you have every right to reject all proposals and not even consider them. But it is a possible revenue generator, and we thought it prudent to bring back to the board for your discussion and review. And I'll be happy to, to address some of the things we've done. Real briefly, in the interest of time, the board did authorize a step one, which was an initial study, which was contracted to a, a firm called Unidev. They gathered information, they gave multiple reports, they have a final consolidated report. Once we received that report, we have additional information from Jim Raby, one of our consultants, on what different mixes may look like or produce. And then about that time, as we know, the real estate market and the economy started to go south, and we didn't think at that time, after getting board permission or direction to develop this RFP, RFQ, that, that the timing would have been a right to produce any desirable results. And so here we are, two years later, saying this might be the time, and, and like I say, we've had, we've had comments both way from, from different developers, so unless we want to go out and test the waters, we don't know if they're murky or clear.
Okay, thank you, are you ready to entertain questions?
I'm just ready to entertain, maybe the board might want to have discussion. There, there's no way for me to really ask board members if, if they'd like to do something like this without putting it on agenda and bringing it to you, and being that you did give the direction, although it be two years ago to develop this proposal. I'll just leave it up, up to you to, to talk amongst yourselves.
Dr. Noel?
Thank you, Madam President. I've, I'm concerned about a couple of things. One, I, while I appreciate all the work you went to, I really am not comfortable seeing the comments of individual board members represented as contextually or implicitly as sort of a, something that suggests a position by the whole board. And particularly on something that has a history that, that this has. And that leads to the second point. The, every time we, the, the past history of this is, has been fraught with conflict, with dissatisfied neighborhoods, people, and a lot of discontent complaints that the school boards, the school district should not go and, should not become a developer, and so on. And I don't know, I don't know what the waters are out there anymore. It's been, as you know, as you said, two years, I don't know what public sentiment is anymore. But I would like to somehow move forward with this, or with something like this, but in a way that avoids the kind of perception of the district as being steamrolling over neighborhoods that I think was so widespread last time, that would be much more accommodating. And from the beginning, so that no blindsiding, no surprises, that we do this in a way that is acceptable in the communities and still meets our needs, and is sensitive to our requirements for revenue sources. And I think that may have changed a lot. I think the public is a lot more aware of our requirements for revenue sources and would be more sympathetic to our needs. And as I say, and maybe, maybe things have changed on the turf out there, I don't know.
My reason for specifically saying board member comments included was it was basically to say that these were individual comments. And perhaps I should have said, individual board member comments included the following. But these were just, these were just some things that...
I knew exactly what you meant, Mr. Hetjank.
There's no consensus, correct. The board is not...
This was not an action, but none of these was adopted by the board.
No, and they were just comments, and they weren't, there was no consensus that this is what should be included. I'll make that perfectly clear for any members of the public that may be watching.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Hetjank. It's good to see this after such a long period of time. It sort of makes me feel like somewhere there's a light at the end of the tunnel, just in terms of an overall economic recovery, if we're even thinking about this. Dr. Noel thinks it might be a train. I, I really want to move forward with these properties. And it may not be the right time for either one of these options in terms of, for me, the options for these two properties are, either we develop it with, using an outside agency, but we do something where we have a long-term revenue for the general fund, or we sell it for its maximum price for capital projects within the districts. And I know that obviously with real estate prices that this may, this is certainly not the optimal time to be selling those properties. But in the shorter term, that's where I think that we need to take action on these two pieces of real estate. And so, I absolutely agree with everything Dr. Noel said. I don't know that there is a good way to start talking about these properties again without having very concerned neighbors, because, you know, that's what we would expect in this community. It would be very strange if we didn't get that. And I would expect neighbors to be here talking about what they'd like to see. But I do think that we need to keep going forward, and they can come and talk about it in terms of an RFP, RFQ, or they can come and talk to us about selling. I mean, in terms of if we sell it, I really do believe we should go for a maximum price. So there's not gonna be any control, and we could be selling it to a developer, and then they can take the issues that way. But I really do think we need to move forward.
Ms. Stephen?
Do we have any idea what the estimated value of either of these properties is?
We do have some appraisals that are a few years old. I had them in my file, I can give you that information in a board brief. But I have no idea what the current value would be.
Right, right.
The good news is, we're no longer paying unused site fees on either of the properties.
Right, right. The, and it was my impression, and I, because I wasn't on the board at the time, I didn't feel the brunt of all the neighborhood concern. But the Tatum property did not generate that kind of outcry, did it? It did.
Yeah.
They both, so Hidden Valley and Tatum both did, okay. All right, well, I was hoping maybe there was one that was more open to, the neighbors were more open to development. Well, I also agree that it's worth looking into it, at least proceeding to see and test the waters. Maybe we don't act on it, as Mr. Hetjank said. There's no need for us to take action if we don't get a proposal we like, but I certainly would be willing to. And I actually would like to maybe update some of the selection criteria to put a green component in. Not surprising I would ask that. But under the team qualifications, for instance, you know, we might ask something about evidence of experience in green and sustainable building practices. I think that makes it more amenable to popular support. And probably under the selection criteria piece two, you've got six items here, one might say something like demonstrated commitment to green, sustainable building practices. So that whoever, whoever acts on these understands that that's something that we care about and includes that as their proposal.
There were in the Unidev studies, some, Mr. Price is reminding me that there were some estimates of what the value could be with certain types of entitlements. But I believe just the raw vacant property was in the $10 to $15 million range. But I can get those, I can get those numbers. Like I say, the appraisal is, oh, four, five years old. So, you know, it's gonna reflect a value of four or five years ago, and then that's not really current value. So I hate to mislead the public or yourselves with true value. Hopefully, a developer will tell us what the value is.
Whatever somebody will pay for it, right?
Exactly.
I have a concern. Did you wanna go ahead, Mr. Price?
Before you finish, I just wanted to add a comment, but please go ahead, Madam President.
Um, my concern has to do with the fact that the public outcry, the controversy that arose the last time that this was being discussed, you know, I think didn't really arise based on anything that our staff did, or even necessarily that the district did, because we weren't really doing that much. We were talking about what possibilities existed, but people were responding to rumor and innuendo and a reaction to things that were taking place in the county and that other entities were doing with the fear that we were going to mirror that. And so, my concern, my point in saying that is that I worry that no matter how, diplomatically we try to have these discussions, we really can't guarantee what the public's reaction is going to be, because it isn't necessarily based on fact or even necessarily us. And here's my point, is I fear what impact this could have on our thoughts about going forward with a bond measure. If the public becomes concerned about this as a political issue at a time that we're asking them to consider voting for a bond for the district. And so, I'm a little concerned about moving on this at this time until we have a little bit more information about what we plan to do with the bond situation. So that was my point, and Mr. Price?
Well, let me lead with your last comment regarding the bond, 'cause that I think is illustrative of the point I wanted to make. Any proposals that you get back are going to not result in a great deal of revenue for the district unless and until there is a successful development venture that is actually carried out, meaning that, starting from the get-go, all of the required process and approvals are completed. And only once those approvals are completed and financing has been secured, would there then be the funds to begin to pay most of what the district can get out of this. One of the things that Mr. Hetjank included in this proposal was it would be important for the developer to submit potential figures that they would be willing to pay, basically just for doing the deal upfront. We'll give you a million dollars now, but we're not gonna pay you another penny until all of our approvals have been met, because we're gonna have to, we, I'm the developer now, we're gonna have to go out well over a million dollars, maybe two or three million dollars, in order to chase all the entitlements. So what the district is gonna get in the short run is very limited. What you might be able to receive is way out in the future, and we all know about major Santa Barbara development projects, whether it's gonna take, you know, eight years, 10 years, whatever. It's a long ways out. And it certainly ought not to be interpreted as something that might compete with bond funding for needed capital projects in the near term. I see the RFQ, RFP, if it issues, as being more of a feeler, really almost like an appraisal in a way, a more useful appraisal. Is this all we can expect to get from this property now? Because in a reverse sort of way, it would demonstrate that for anybody that would say, "Oh, don't pass a bond, let him sell one of these properties, or at least one of these properties," that there isn't anything there, or that's gonna be there for a very long period of time. Also, my other point is, as long as all is quiet on the real property front, nothing is happening. But by at least showing to the public that we're interested in making some practical use of the property for the purpose of generating revenue, it could activate interest on the part of others to wanna do something with the property. Maybe a green group wants to make an offer that would preserve at least part of one of the properties. It promotes discussion. It also allows us, I think, to begin to think of an additional option in addition to what Ms. Parker said about doing some sort of a swap, a land trade. Because there are other properties in Santa Barbara that are in play for the future that the district might like to secure or secure an interest in. And so, this is something that will definitely serve a role in providing us more information. But whether or not it's gonna be misconstrued in some way by the public is, you know, there's always that potential, and it's up to everyone involved to do as much as they can to dissuade folks from the notion that here goes the district again, you know, 40 units to the acre, 'cause that's not what this is about.
Okay, we do have public comment on this item. Mr. Wheeler, Lane Wheeler?
Thank you. Three very succinct comments. One, if you're doing this, I would like to see, I would request from my position as SPTA to include Happy Canyon in here, at least, to see if it has a value, if somebody has an interest in it, if it could be swapped, traded, sold, something. It is another asset, and if we're gonna talk about vacant properties, I think it needs to be in the mix. We have, in the past, talked about employee housing. I believe that there is some contentious aspects to that. SPTA has had a conversation about that. Because this is in a very preliminary stage, I would only ask that it still be included as a potential for the property, but that there's no binding, you know, consideration to that. And the other thing, and I believe SPTA is in affiliation with this concept, and that is that whatever happened here be income positive to the district. Because, you know, if the properties were simply sold, that would be capital projects. That doesn't allow us to, you know, bargain for benefit to offset some of the costs that we're increasing in our health benefits, or possibly wages. So, you know, just let's find something that can be income positive. And this obviously is an preliminary stage. I agree with Ms. Parker that it shouldn't just be sitting on a shelf, that hopefully, we might be able to entice some interest in it. And I agree with you, Ms. Cordero. I think the response from the neighborhood maybe was somewhat misdirected, and I think this might be another way to approach it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Ms. Parker? I just wanna chime in that, thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Cordero, because I do worry that, no matter how we broach this topic, that it will be misconstrued, even though it could bring up some terrific opportunities for the community. And so, I do worry about that timeline.
We've taken a look at the timeline. If we are to make a decision about bond levies, we would need to make that decision by the end of June. And, you know, since there is a potential for confusion with this, I do think we need to avoid having the same, having the two discussions on top of each other. In this area, this is something that we spent considerable time looking at, considerable amount of discussing with the local neighborhoods and the community in general. We spent a considerable amount of money examining this. And I thought that when we came to the final decision to go ahead and send out an RFP, I thought that that was very well received. We had people who were initially sending out flyers saying, "High density is coming to your neighborhood," who were sitting here saying, "Good, that's the right thing to do." Yes. And I thought we had really turned the corner. However, we do run the risk of just starting back into it all over again. And I'm not interested in going through the whole discussion again. The board came to a decision, and I think it's more a matter of timing at this point than it is to revisit the discussion start to finish.
Dr. Sarvis, if I may, just a clarification to the point of our speaker. I'd have to get the timelines and look up the dates, but there is, as part of the state's flexibility that they, guidelines that they've passed, that if you do sell, a district does sell a real property, there was a certain period of time that that money can go to the general fund rather than capital fund only. But I forgot what that timeline is. I didn't know the discussion was gonna...
Yeah, I think it's 2013. I think it's 2013.
Yeah. So there is a possibility that the funds from the result of a sale could go for general fund use rather than capital fund use.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion and see how others feel about this. Because since we, we'll be getting the information back about the bond, or some preliminary information at least about the bond before June, or by June.
In June.
In June, okay?
Yes.
That maybe we could defer this conversation for just a little while longer until we have more of, more information about what our plans are in terms of proceeding with the bond, with the bond measure, and then we would have a better sense of whether these might be competing with each other, et cetera. Because I think, I'm interested in knowing what the public's reaction is to the whole notion of the bond. And I would feel more comfortable knowing that before making any additional decisions about this. But I agree with you, Dr. Sarvis, that we have had this discussion. We probably don't wanna have the whole discussion over again. And it really is just sort of a matter of, how do we move forward? What the timing is on moving forward? So, do other board members have any objections to tabling it for a month or so until we get some more information on the bond? At least, okay?
Because we're gonna be getting the May revise, too, and be faced with budget cuts, which will align with our bond discussion.
Right. Okay, then, we'll leave it at that. But maybe, Mr. Hetjank, if you could get some updated information in the board brief, that would be helpful. Thank you. Okay, item F2, Annual Technology Board Report.
Well, here's something we've been waiting for. And I'm sorry, Mr. Aaron isn't here tonight, but we're ready to go with this report. Davis Hayden, our Director of Research, Technology Evaluation and Technology.
Hello again. So you have the document before you. I'm just gonna provide a little bit of an overview here. You all know we have a technology plan, and this is the third draft of the technology plan, and it'll be expiring in 2013. And so, in a technology plan, it's the blueprint for many of the things we do. E-Rate depends upon it, Microsoft Money depends upon it, all sorts of grants depend upon it. E-Rate depends upon it, Microsoft Money depends upon it, all sorts of grants depend upon having it. There'll be an update to it in the next three or four months, which is required by E-Rate. So that's one of the things that is sort of a foundation for a lot of the things that go on in terms of technology in our school district. Many of the items in the technology plan have already been finished. They've been, we've already accomplished many of the goals in the technology plan, but there are some goals, of course, that we have not. We've exceeded some of the goals in the technology plan. So just wanted to kind of start out with that as the foundation of the technology in our school district. I also give a little short history on the organization of technology in our district. And I think it's important for all of you to keep that current in your perspective. Reason why I say that is that in reality, the staffing of technology, and I follow this, what Lane Wheeler was saying a little bit earlier, in the technology department, we actually have expanded all the number of things we do, but we've reduced the number of staff to do those things. And so it's unfortunate in that regard. There's two things that have happened, is that the number of administrators has declined and the number of technicians has also basically stayed the same or declined too. So there is kind of a, an unfortunate occurrence here. Budget cuts and everything else have caused some of this, but there has been a decline in the staffing of technology while our duties have increased. So I just wanted to point that out. It's, one of the problems with that is it limits our ability to actually do new things. And in this report, I point out a couple of things that I really, we really are lacking in our district. And one is a curriculum technology piece. We just don't have anybody doing curriculum technology. So I try to pick up on that. Cynthia White, Dr. White has tried to pick up on that a little bit. And Dennis and Carol, our two chief technicians, have tried to pick up on that. But it's sort of like a side thing that they don't really get to focus on. So that's one really crucial piece that's missing in our district. So the organization, you can see through the history here of how it's changed through the years, the last couple of years. I want to say though, as I talk about this, is that right now, I am extremely pleased with the staff I have in all three departments that I'm running. Our technicians right now, we've got four incredibly solid technicians in our staff. Dennis and Carol, you all know Dennis and Carol, they do an incredible job of running basically the staff. In the ITS department, Diane Hemmer has done an incredible job of being sort of like our lead programmer, our lead ITS person. And right now, we have three other people, Brian Rouse, Adriana Flores, and Sasha Javadi, who are just really excellent and it's, the staff is running very well. So we're very fortunate to have very strong staff in those departments. And of course, Kerry Martin does an incredible job for evaluation. So the district's got great staff. That's part of the reason why we're running so smooth with so few staff. There's been a lot of major changes and I've listed them on the third page here. Obviously, you know that we switched from SASE XP to Ares. That was a huge change that occurred. And it went extremely smooth. I'm so happy, I mean, there's so many places it could have really been a major disaster, but it went really smooth. And we're now in our second and a half year into Ares and we're actually switching over to a new system called Ares.net, which is on the web. We're not ready to actually dedicate ourselves to Ares.net, but at the end of next year, not next year, but at the end of next year, I think we'll be ready to do that. And that'll, that'll be really nice for everybody, be able to get Ares from anywhere in the world at that point. We've had installations of Waterford, of, you know about Read 180 and System 44. That was a little bit kind of sketchy in the beginning when we tried to get that up and running. And in the beginning, people thought it might have been either us or bandwidth. And some of it was, but most of it was actually the software. There was problems with the software when they delivered it to us, so that was kind of a problem there. We've had GradeWorks, which we had to get rid of, it didn't work. TeleParent, a wonderful system, I'm sure you all know about that. We've switched to Gmail. We actually switched to a Exchange server. And even though the Exchange server was working quite well, we switched to that a couple of years ago, it was starting to eat up a full staff times, one staff member full time. And I don't have staff to be able to be full time in any task like that. It was killing us. And so switching to Gmail was really helped tremendously because it doesn't take a full staff person, it takes only a partial time for that. Big Fix Power Management, we've got that installed on all computers, but Dennis or Carol needs to have some time to actually fully install, get the benefits going for power management. So that's what that is. Big Fix is a power management system. So we've got it turned on, but only for a few computers and we just need time to do that. And Edgiosoft, you know about that? We have Edgiosoft now in the elementary district as well as the secondary district. And that's an incredible tool that our teachers are using. And we're finding that more and more teachers are getting very comfortable with it. And so, you know, it's a little difficult when you have new stuff in the beginning, but then they get used to it. You also can see the bandwidth increases on here. And when I came to district, we had 10 megabits of bandwidth. And now we're going to be in July going to 200. And not only are we going to 200, but we're going to 40 to each of the elementary schools. So the bandwidth will not be an issue at any of our schools, but our aging hardware is. And so I'm going to switch to that right now. What needs to be done? The hardware in our district is aging and very old. I know that facilities is part of this issue. I know Dave can probably speak to the age of our telephone system. I believe that they don't, I don't know, I don't think they sell it anymore, or something like that.
My refurbished.
It's all refurbished.
My telephone's still rotary.
I was going to say.
Yeah. So that's a very nice visual representation of a lot of the hardware in our district, not just the telephone system, but many of the other pieces of hardware we have is very old. Fortunately, we have Microsoft voucher money and we have been purchasing recently some, you have approved recently, some upgrades to our hardware. And we're getting those installed. And this summer is going to be a major push to try and get our hardware. Because see, when you have, when you're doing hardware installations, you've got to turn the school off and things of that nature. So it's really nice to do it during the summer. We're going to try and get our hardware up to speed to match the software bandwidth that we now have. It takes a lot of time for our technicians to trace down, you know, what's wrong, what do we have to do? Is it a connection? Is it a switch? Where is the problems at? Takes two people usually to do that, not just one person. So it's labor intensive. We just haven't had the time to do that. So we're trying to get that done this summer. There's a few other items on here that I want to kind of go over. One is to look at piloting wireless internet. The schools have been systematically, sometimes without our knowledge, which is unfortunate, have been placing these little $35, $40 internet access points throughout their schools. They unfortunately set them by the way they would set them at their home. They don't set them by the way they had to be set to actually work with our network. Sometimes they bring our network down, sometimes they just bring down everything in a school. Of course, every, these devices fail constantly and have to be reset. Each time that happens, we usually have to send a technician out to do it. So if you have 40 of them in a school and they're calling us once every three days to fix their little $40 access point, you can imagine the staff time that's using it. On the other hand, schools are really needing these. They have more and more laptops, they have more and more devices that need to have wireless to have them run. So it's kind of one of these, you know, catch 22s, how do you do this? And so one of the ways to do this is that you actually put in a professional wireless system for the school. We're exploring several different companies in this regard. A couple of schools are so much wanting it that they're willing to pay for it with their own site funds. So I think that this summer, we're going to probably try and get a couple of schools up wireless for demonstration, you know, as a demo school. Find out how it works and then see if we can't move on it for the rest of the district over the next two or three years. So that's a big, it's going to take a lot of staff time again to do this. I mentioned on this, new projects upgrade, technology in the curriculum, and I just don't know how we're going to do that without another staff person, but it's electronic whiteboards. For instance, we were having sites. I finally had to just put a hold with Brian Tangway, our purchasing agent on this, because sites were just sending out purchase orders for like a Smartboard here, or a Hitachi there. And they're costing $3,500 per one. When there's technology out there now that we can use, that would be only, say, $1,500 for the same, same type of unit. But they don't know that because we don't have anybody that's really guiding the development of curriculum technology. And so I've been trying to get that under control, but it's a lot of work to try and herd a lot of principles around, when it comes to ordering these type of devices. So that's another major project that we have to undertake in our district, is to get curriculum technology under control. And let's see, some of the things we've already done, like I mentioned, we've already actually, we're going to switch in July 1st to 40 megabits per elementary school. There's a major voice over IP project that's undergoing between facilities and us, mainly a facilities project right now, that they're putting voice over IP lines into four schools. And we're getting phones for, I think, five schools. Is that right? We're getting phones for four schools. So that's about it for the technology report, unless you have questions about technology in our district.
Board members? Ms. Parker?
There is so much that we could say about technology. And I'm not going to go into everything because I could have loads of, I have loads of questions and, you know, so many specifics we could go into, but I think I'll go just to the one point, which is understaffing. And because I know that sites will, you know, they'll buy computers for a classroom and then they'll, they'll end up having to sit there for months because there's nobody, unless they're lucky enough to have a teacher who can coordinate with the district about setting something up. There's just nobody here that has the time to do that. So it ends up being an incredibly slow, slow process. And I think it's one of my biggest, one of my bigger frustrations, I should say, is knowing that the world is moving in this direction and we are so underfunded and understaffed for this. And I think it's really a detriment to our students and it's unfortunate. But thank you. I like all the issues that you raised, the things that you point out, so.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. And I agree with you that I think this is a topic for a larger discussion. So we're going to need to come back to this. Ms. Deacon, did you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, and I'll try to be brief too. Well, first of all, I would just like to thank you for how readable this was, as much as it broke my heart to read a lot of it. And I totally agree about the staffing piece. And the, just this whole notion that technology is moving so fast and it's so hard for us to constantly be playing catch up. So, you know, I mean, going wireless would be nice in the sense that you leapfrog over some of the hardware problems potentially. But I also just want to acknowledge the role that our teachers are playing in providing technology to our students and also the burden it puts on them when things don't work. And how they, I know they would prefer to be spending their time teaching rather than fixing equipment, which as a teacher I know myself, I've had to do and it's incredibly frustrating, so. But I like the fact that you're really looking forward, you're looking ahead, you've identified what we need to do, it's just a matter of how we get there in terms of funding and staffing. So I did note, and I'll end on this, there's an article in Education Week recently about students repairing computers, homegrown tech. And I know it's easy for us to throw out these ideas, but in the end, you know, it's a career tech piece. And if we found someone who wanted to really shepherd it through, I would certainly support something like that and have our own students be helping us out and learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deacon. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Dr. Hayden, and this is a topic that we will definitely come back to and we appreciate the work you've, no, I'm sorry, we do have a public comment, but I just want to finish up. We appreciate what you've done and the sort of dire circumstances in which you've done it, so thanks.
Lane Wheeler, the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I too would like to thank Dr. Hayden's leadership and especially the support staff that have been there. I often hear, I can't get my stuff to work, but as soon as I can get one of the IT people here, I can get it up and going. So I can't thank them and applaud their fine work enough and they have done a tremendous job. I can't agree more with Dr. Hayden's report either. Obviously, training is essential. It's very uneven. It's being driven by implementation of new programs. I'm certainly not suggesting that we stop implementing, but as Dr. Hayden identified, Edgiosoft now at about three to four years out is finally being more fully used. That's because teachers have had time to understand the program, work with it. We've gotten the bugs worked out. You have heard me come and speak to you about the failures of Edgiosoft. I'm hearing the same things with System 44 and Read 180 right now. I was just at a site last week and got an airful from teachers that are trying to make things work and it's not there. It's about a three to five year process to really get things up. Unfortunately, that's the same time span that ages technology. You know, when you buy a computer, you know, three to five years, it's going to be dead or out of date. It's very difficult for teachers to get rid of the old stuff because they're always afraid they're not going to get anything new. And I had Apple II GS computers for a long time because I knew they wouldn't crash, I knew they couldn't get viruses, and I knew the kids couldn't quote unquote "fix" them for me. So, you know, it's hard to get rid of that stuff and yet it almost begets the using of old technology. So that's a, that's a mental piece I think we have to get through. Obviously, there's a need for staff support. Teachers have been leading a lot of the processes that have moved our technological education forward in our school sites. It probably happens a little bit more at the secondary because folks have that prep period. And oftentimes, when your computer's not working, you call up a Todd Rickman and he comes out during his prep period and fixes it for you. A little more difficult to do that. I was able to do that when I was at Monroe with the help of student teachers and that sort of thing. But once again, it's just a very intense activity. Anytime we get to these situations, we also have a tremendous amount of frustration. And staff gets frustrated and then they go outside and do what Dr. Hayden suggests. They buy those little internet pieces that they can buy for your bedroom and all of a sudden, you get 40 of those at a school site and you have a disaster. So it's a frustration born out of the want to move forward and I think it's understandable. But I think Dr. Hayden hits a good point, that we need a bigger master plan that really does give some directions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Okay, well, with that, we will move on to item F3, a report and discussion on green and solar projects.
Good. We've been looking at green and solar projects for quite a while now and Carl Marrows is taking the lead at Dave Hat Young's direction. Dave, I know you're going to introduce this. I also see that there are 44 slides there and I know that we're going to want some question and answer time.
I don't have that PowerPoint to show, Dr. Sarves. That is just the slide.
Oh, this is the Irvine, this is the Irvine.
This is the Irvine PowerPoint that several board members attended the presentation on. And so I included it for those board members who are not present, so they, all board members have access to the same information.
I was afraid you were going to show the Irvine.
No. I have it on the computer, but I don't have it loaded, ready to go, so.
Very good.
But, no, the district for the last 10 years, since I've been in this district, has continually taken steps towards being more green, even before the word becoming greener became popular. Healthy Schools Act of 2000 directed the districts to start that process. Healthy Schools Act of 2000 directed the districts to start that process with an integrated pest management program. And so there's reduction of pesticides, reduction of chemicals, reduction of power usage, finding ways to do things safer and to save money. I've listed a few things here and of course, as soon as you read something, you see you've left out a word, we talk about low-flow water fixtures with sensors have, I should say, replaced older models, that word's missing and there's a sentence that doesn't make sense, but some of us do our own secretarial work, so I apologize for that. We've looked at a lot of things, we've made a lot of progress, our last bond issue brought us a lot of energy-saving devices and we've looked at a lot of things, we've looked at photovoltaics, we've looked at cogeneration. And in the interest of time, I'll say that when you look through these slides from the presentation from Mark Sontag, there's a lot of ideas about different ways to save energy that we may want to have discussions in the future with the board, taking some appliances, personal appliances out of classrooms or charging for them or working with teachers' associations to come up with a policy is one way to reduce some, just things like not leaving the lights on as a signal to the custodian that the room needs to be cleaned, installing sensors so that can't happen, motion sensors, there's some in our restrooms here, even in this building. But one of the things that we've been looking at is with solar energy and photovoltaics and power purchase agreements and every time we go to any seminars, whether it be Casbo Cash or anything like that, I always ask Carl to attend every photovoltaic-type solar presentation that he can think of or fit in and he has been the lead in this. He is the one that developed this draft request for proposals, he's the one that has done the research, he's the one that has spent the time talking to the city and Santa Barbara City College about those projects that they've completed. And so I think we're at the point now where we want to probably suggest that in the future or in the near future, that we go out with a test project. And like I say, Carl's done the research, I'll ask him to come up and answer questions and do a little bit more in-depth presentation, but based on his research, he's selected a San Marcos High School as our site that we want to pilot a project at. And we don't know what these proposals are going to bring back, whether it be, sometimes it's more cost-effective to actually put them on top of covered parking rather than to go through and add weight to roofs. There's a lot of different things that companies are going to be able to tell us. We have a list of over 20 firms that we think are reputable and interested based on contacts with the district. We don't really want to put out a wide-open RFP, RFQ to the world because we're going to get hundreds of proposals and we just don't have the staff time to review hundreds of proposals. Enough people have contacted the district, Carl's done some due diligence on research and so when we do go out, we suggest that we go out and solicit 20, 25 reputable firms to give us proposals. And with that, I'll introduce Carl. And like I say, when it comes to photovoltaics, he's the expert and even though my name's on the agenda item, he's the one that has done all the work.
Hello, my name's Carl Mayrose, I'm the project manager for the secondary district. I guess the first thing I want to say is I'm going to try to be as brief and as quick as I can and I'm not going to proselytize on photovoltaics because you're all educated and understand the value as far as savings to the district that are potentially there, having a budget that we know what it's going to look like for the next 20 years and certainly the educational and public relations benefits that this bring, plus the fact that it's simply the right thing to do. I mean, when I turned on my computer this morning and looked at Google, the first thing I saw was an article about the fact that many scientists believe we're at the tipping point, where if we don't make some radical changes in the way we conduct our civilizations at this point, then our ecosystems and environment are going to be past the point of being remediated. So essentially, earlier Dave mentioned in regards to the RFQ regarding the Tatum and Hidden Valley properties, that this is not something that we are looking at as a point of no return. Essentially, the RFQ is an opportunity for us to bring in some firms, to talk to them and say, this is what our district looks like. We spend 1.3, 1.4 million dollars a year on energy, I've talked to school districts that have had savings of 10, 20, 30% by going with photovoltaics. DSA, the Division of State Architects, is pushing for schools to become grid-neutral. I'm not completely convinced that that is the most economical and wise position for us to take at this point, but it is certainly one worth considering. It gives us a great deal of flexibility. But I would like to do, as Dave mentioned, is start with a goal of a pilot project at San Marcos High School, something that can demonstrate to the community that our commitment is in this direction, give us a good teaching tool for the kids and also potentially save the district some money. Another aspect of this is there are various legislative instruments that are mandating energy savings that are occurring over the next few years, including AB 32, which is a Global Warming Solutions Act you may be familiar with. The Green Building Standards Code is expected to become enacted within the next two or three years, which is the mechanism by which the Governor's Executive Order S-20-04 will probably be enacted, which will at least provide guidelines and may have some mandate for us to do further savings. Edison's projected rate increases for the three-year period of 2009 to 2011 are over I don't think the Edison rates are likely to be going down over the next 20 years. With a, Dave mentioned a power purchase agreement when he was speaking, this is an opportunity and this is probably one of the key things that we need to think about, is the fact that we can do these photovoltaic projects essentially at no cost to the district through a power purchase agreement. So we can set up an agreement with what's called an ESCO, an Energy Service Supply Company, they'll come in, they'll do the engineering, they'll do the permitting, they'll do the design, all under the auspices of the school district, put up a project that is both aesthetically acceptable to the community, that provides the kind of energy we want, that's clean, that's non-polluting, that reduces our carbon footprint, reduces our greenhouse gas emissions standards, which are both requirements in future legislation, and we essentially don't put out any costs other than the planning department's time and the facilities department's time and our time in deciding how we want to proceed. So I think that's it for what I'm going to tell you tonight. We're just looking for permission to go ahead and do that first step of getting the request for qualifications out there and start talking to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayrose. Now, I have a question, I guess, for Dr. Sarves. This is on our conference agenda, so we're not at this point giving permission or...
We assumed that the board would have comments and that we would bring back a proposal for approval.
We were intending to bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're looking for board input, do you have any suggestions, any refinements? But that's why there's no date on that proposal, because we'd bring it back for formal action.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hat Young.
We intend to ask you for permission to go out and do this.
Okay.
And just one more thing, and what this would do, and Carl, I don't know if you caught that when he said a steady budget, we're going to have price increases with a power purchase agreement, but they're going to be preset lower than traditionally what we expect Edison to go up. So what this will do is allow us to purchase power where we know what it's going to cost for the next 20 years, the increases are capped and we expect those Edison increases to be larger. And if somebody thinks that Edison rates are going to go down, then we're probably doing the wrong thing and that's one of the assumptions that we're making with this agreement. I want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
Well, that's one of the big advantages other districts have found, that they're able to judge what their rates will be in the future for a number of years out.
Well, are there comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Parker?
I'm really thrilled at the direction that the district is going on this and I want to thank Facilities, both of you, Mr. Hat Young and Mr. Mayrose, for working on this. I know that you've been working on this even before this was coming forward to us in terms of a district presentation from Irvine. I think this is absolutely the right way for us to go. I do want to give a shout-out to Mrs. Deacon for showing tremendous leadership on the board and pushing for green construction projects for our schools and really making sure that that's on the forefront of our minds at all times, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate the work you did to get Mr. Sontag here from Irvine for that presentation, which was terrific. My only question is, obviously Irvine is an example, they went right out and went district-wide. I can see the benefits of having a pilot project, but my only question is, would it, could it financially be more advantageous for us to go either just secondary district-wide or K-12 in terms of going out for that kind of a request? Would be more likely to get a better deal if the company that we're working with knew that it was going to be working with more schools rather than just one?
You always have an advantage when you buy in quantity, I guess would be the short answer to that, so I would suspect so, but I haven't gotten to the point of doing that assessment yet. I think if we were going to go and try to do the entire district, which I think is what we should do ultimately, I think we would want to have a dialogue with the communities, with the neighbors and everybody, because at some of the sites, one of the reasons I like San Marcos is because I think it has a lower profile than some of the other sites that I looked at as far as visibility and impacts on the neighborhood. So I would want to make sure that the communities are aware and understand that there is going to be some visible impact. I mean, you can't put up panels without, you know, they're going to be seen. So that would be the only caveat I would have with going to a big program throughout the district is just to make sure we have that dialogue with the community.
Ms. Deacon?
Thank you, and thank you to both of you as well for this, and I know you were working on this prior to that presentation and it was nice probably to be able to, you know, put what we're doing together with what they're doing because we know we learned from other districts on a number of fronts. And I had the same question about the economy of scale. On the one hand, a pilot project is always nice because you work out the kinks and you chip away at it. It may be that whoever we end up with may want to look with us at a multi-tiered process, so you implement it at one site and then, you know, you've laid the groundwork for going ahead with secondary and third sites as well. And I'm really sensitive to the community piece, I know that Irvine thought long and hard about where they put theirs for that very reason and we want to make sure that whatever we do is well-received. Do we have any sense of what percent of energy might be generated or would be, or what we're paying now would be mitigated at this particular site with, say, the parking structures?
Well, we can, we have the capability, given either the roof square footage or the square footage, the acreage of the lots, the parking lots, if we went with parking structures, to essentially be grid-neutral at any of the three high schools. That's a possibility, but again, I don't think, at this point, it would probably not be economically in our best interest to go completely grid-neutral. So it would be, that's a discussion we would have to have with the Energy Service Supply Companies to get their recommendations. Also, we have another tier here with Edison. Edison will look at any power purchase agreement or any project we propose and give their input on it as well. So I would say that I would want to defer that answer until we've got somebody on board that has more expertise than I have.
Right. And the state rebates, that money goes to the provider, not to us, correct?
That's correct. We would apply for the monies from the California Solar Initiative and other rebates and tax incentives and those would all go to the Energy Service Supply Company with which we contracted. That's one of the ways they're able to do it and then sell us back power at or below current market rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank both of you and Ms. Deacon for really moving us forward in this area. I think, no doubt, this is the right direction for us to be going and the extent to which we can save money while doing the right thing is always, you know, a plus that we can't afford to pass up. So I'm wondering if we could perhaps get a little bit more information in maybe a board brief that could possibly address some of the cost-effectiveness of the pilot versus going for at least an elementary or secondary district-wide process from the beginning.
And let me comment on that, if we had five Carl Mayroses, we'd probably be moving a lot quicker, but unfortunately, we only have one and he has a lot of other duties also. My approach to this was kind of the same as the lease, lease-back. I'd like to have a successful project, I feel if we have a successful project, especially with a successful responder, that that responder would know that there's the possibility of a lot more work down the road in the future. We'd be happy to do whatever the direction of the board was, but my personal feeling was that a successful pilot project would lead the way to packages of projects in the future. But if you'd like to go out with a bigger package to begin with, it may take us a little more time, but we'd be glad to do that.
Well, actually, I think that if you gave us, for example, that rationale in the board brief or, you know, whatever, I'm perfectly willing to bow to the expertise of the two of you, but I just wanted that explanation.
May I speak to that as well? When we were talking about lease, lease-back, we'd had a long number of years of experience with local contractors and some contractors who weren't local and most of those were great experiences. We had some difficult times as well early on and we learned a lot in those lessons. And this is what I'm anxious to establish in a pilot project, it could be larger than this, but you learn so much just by living through it once and we will be at the point where I think we can do this effectively. I'm concerned about something that would be just too large, too big a bite to section out from the get-go.
Ms. Deacon? Technology changes so fast too, is the other piece, so we want to be smart about how we do it. And if maybe if we do go ahead with the bond measure, there may be other green projects that we can work with there too.
There may well be.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayrose, and thank you, Mr. Hat Young. Okay, I think we can move on with our update on special education. We are running almost an hour behind schedule, so I just want the board to keep, I know and I apologize, you've been sitting here, you thought you were going to have an early evening, didn't you? So I just want us to keep that in mind as we continue.
Robin Sowoski will introduce this and I believe you just got the cue, Robin and Kerry Mills, this is a 10-minute item.
Okay, we will try to do that. We're going to be covering several topics tonight and we'll try to do that quickly. Dr. Kerry Mills is going to start out with an overview of the district's self-review process and then I'm going to finish up with an update on the stakeholder process that we've been going through.
Okay, good evening again, I will try and do this as quickly as possible. So I do have a PowerPoint, but I think it will be fairly brief. So I would just like to explain to you the special education self-review process that we have been going through for, since October, since actually I arrived right in time to do the self-review. So this is a process that is taking us about a year, so it's really an intensive process and I just wanted to let you know what we've been working on. So very quickly, the purpose of the self-review. It reviews the implementation of procedural rights and safeguards, it reviews how students benefit and progress from receiving special education instruction and services, and it asks the question, is the student receiving educational benefit? And I'll explain that in a minute. How often do we go through this and how often do all districts go through this? And this happens every four years. So as I said, I arrived right in October, right in time for this opportunity. This is the overview of the process in our districts and I will go through each of those So... So district staff was trained by the State Department consultant. Basically, the special education directors, Michelle Britton-Bass, Dr. Michelle Britton-Bass and I, were trained by the consultant from CDE, and we were trained in October for the initial phase, and then we were trained again in January for the self-review activities. I forgot to mention our data specialist also was trained with us. She does a ton of inputting of data throughout this process, and she's been really critical in that. The first step was gathering parent input, and we did that in three ways. We had public forums held, and we had three of those. We had written parent surveys. Those are scripted by the state, so there are specific questions that we have to ask, and those surveys went out to special education parents, parents of special education students. And then we also had staff calling parents to get the number of surveys required. So they, again, they had a scripted set of questions to ask. We interviewed, I'm throwing things. We interviewed 132 elementary parents, completed a survey or were interviewed, and we interviewed 243 secondary parents using that script. And basically, you might ask why those numbers, and we were required to have 20% of our population sampled, and so that was the 20%. If I could find my order of my materials, I can tell you the number. Perhaps not. We'll just go on, trying to be quickly. So we submitted our findings to the state, and that was based on our surveys from the parents. We had to report the findings, and then we did that by December 1. Then based on that, based on several things, based on parent survey data, based on monitoring of student data, and that includes monitoring of IEP data that goes into the State Department all of the time. Every time we have an IEP, we have to do inputting of data, which is tracked by the state. So the state is monitoring us all the time. There's also the history of due process that is considered, and also the history of complaints, parent complaints filed with CDE. So those are legal complaints. Based on all of those, those are the areas that we were required to examine for compliance. So the first part of it was the student record review. We did that the week of February 22nd through 29th. The elementary team was led by, I led the elementary team, and Dr. Michelle Britton-Bass led the secondary team, and we each had about 13 staff members on our team to help us with this task. We each examined 40 files that were pulled randomly. So we went through four, I'm sorry, 50 random files. We also had four infant files and five preschool files, and those were gone through by the county office staff that served those kids. Basically, the question being, were the IEP documents written correctly? So we were looking for compliance. Well, what happened?
Click it once more.
Click it once more. There we go. Thank you for my prompt. Okay. Then we had, the next phase was educational benefit, and we had to pull five elementary files and five secondary files. This was a very intensive study. So the educational benefit is a three-year look at a student. So we looked at a student's progress over a three-year period of time. We looked at progress, whether the student was moving from year one to year two to year three, whether the goals were correlated, whether we were seeing progress, whether we were seeing skills increase. We were looking for all of that evidence. So those were very Let's see. Seems like I skipped. Skip? What happened? I don't know what happened to it. Well, I think you have it on your handout, but I can, I can recall what the implementation phase is. Is, we took a look at, basically, looking at the IEP, were the services delivered that were required on the IEP? So we looked for evidence. We looked for actual evidence that the staff had to provide to us to make sure that they were providing the services that were required on that IEP. We also were required to call parents. So we pulled 10 files each, 10 elementary and 10 secondary. We called parents, and again, we had a scripted set of questions that we had to ask parents about the actual implementation and whether they thought that the services were being delivered as they should be. We had to submit our findings to CDE, March 24th, 2010. Basically, if we found a systemic error, which would be 16% of our sample, so for example, if we pull 50 files and you take 16% of that sample, that would only be three students that had any area. For example, if a student had an IEP late, say, an annual IEP was not held in time, if there were three of those students that had not been, had not had an IEP in time, that would be a systemic error for our district, and that's what we would have to report. On those items where we only had five students, if you can look at 16%, only one student would create a systemic error. So in some samples, we had one student, for example, that had a disability that was unique, and so if that student had anything wrong, then that was a systemic error. We had to report all of our systemic errors. What happened? What happened? Okay. So then we enter the corrective action phase, and I really liked that, because I really liked that for staff training and learning. I think we really learned a lot going through that. The 13 people that were on each team really had a great opportunity to learn quite a bit. We had to go through corrective action and provide training for our staff. And so some of that training has already happened at department meetings. So we have department meetings we've already held, the department chairs, the nurses, the psychologists, the speech therapists, the deaf and hard-of-hearing, itinerant staff, and the adaptive PE staff. So all of those, we've had two of those each for corrective action. Then we are also having district-wide dates coming up, and Juree Sputterfield, our SLPA director, is going to be providing that training, and that's on May 13th for secondary staff and May 25th for elementary staff. And then we're also providing training for our principals, and so June 16th and June 17th, the principals will be going through this training. We also have to follow up with a random selection of files, again, in October, to see if we've basically learned our lessons and we're doing it correctly now. So we'll be pulling more random files. We've also had to do student-level corrections, so we have to call IEPs for certain students that have been out of compliance and fix those student IEPs. Whoops. We'll go back. I need a prompt. There we go. Thank you. So, anyway, so hopefully we have learned a lot through this process, and we will be all the better for it. Questions?
Okay, we have two public comments.
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we can go, I apologize. I didn't remember that you were going to be giving additional information, so we'll wait on the public comment.
And Kerry, did you want to continue? I don't know if you had your other item.
Yes, thank you. I do have one other item.
I think you were just asking questions about the self-review in particular. No one has any questions about self-review?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Dr. Noel?
It's really not a question of her. I just have a great puzzlement. Presumably, this goes, has been going on every year for a number of years.
No, it's only every four years.
Only every four years?
Right, once every four years.
And so, and this has nothing to do with you, but presumably this district got through the last one.
Four years ago?
Yeah.
Presumably.
Yeah, presumably. And so everything was fine. I don't even want to look at you, because I'm not talking about you.
Okay.
But my puzzlement is, then, then how could we have had a FICMAT report? How could we have had 153 recommendations to change things after going through this state process? And this is really a criticism of this process, I guess. How could we have had all the laws, the legal settlements? How could we have had all the litigation, the due process hearings, and paid out hundreds of thousands of dollars for doing things wrong, and yet passed this goddamn thing? Pardon me, but.
Mm-hmm.
I just.
Right. Well, it would depend each year, and, you know, it does show on our document how many hearings we've had, how many complaints we've had, and that all is reflective in the report that the state will ultimately make. So the state can make three decisions. They can, they can either say, Santa Barbara, you did a great job. You're on your own. Keep going. Or they can say, boy, you know, it looks like you need a little help. You know, we might have a little bit of oversight. Or they can make a third decision, and they can say, we're coming down. We're going to be living there for a while and making sure that everything is okay.
And I do get the impression that this costs us a lot of money to do, this process.
Internally, it's a lot of staff time.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I guess I'll start with four years ago. Do we have a copy of the document from four years ago?
I'm sure we do. I haven't personally seen it.
Because I would like to know, in terms of systemic errors, was it at 16% or around 16% then? Is that considered normal? Is that considered very high?
Well, 16% is the level that all districts have to look for as a systemic error. So depends on your sample size as to whether you're going to have a systemic error or not.
I see what you're saying.
So if you, we had to have 50. We're a fairly large district. So some districts only had 10, or some districts had 100.
Okay.
You know, so it would be 16% of your sample.
Okay. All right. I understand that better now. I would really love to see a comparison between what happened four years ago, because I imagine that the state's process has changed over the past four years, and that maybe their questions are different, and, you know, the reporting processes have evolved. And so I don't know that you could directly compare the two, but I would, I'd be curious.
You know, I've been through it many, many times in my career, so I've been through many self-reviews where I've worked in the past, and the process is slightly different, but not that much. They alter it a little bit, but it's, it has some similar traits.
It just seems like an actually very valuable process.
It is.
So that's good.
Thinking that probably was in the board brief. We'll look back to see.
Me, four years ago.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Deacon?
Thank you. I know this was a lot of work, and I appreciate the thorough way it was approached. So systemic errors, did we find trends? I mean, where were those places where you realized we needed work and we met that 16% threshold?
We had quite a lot of systemic errors, so if you would like me to go through them, or the next time, I can make a report of all of the systemic errors.
That could be in a board brief, too.
Yeah, okay. But we are addressing all of them in our big corrective action, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's get, let's get to our public comment, because.
I have another subject, though.
Oh, I apologize. I keep forgetting that. I'm, I am jumping the gun.
My next one is very brief.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. The next thing I wanted to talk about is that we've had Dr. Carol Miller back, and she just arrived back, I think it was last week, and she's been working part-time as her schedule allows. And so she was hired as the communication consultant, and I just wanted to give you an update as to what she's working on. So very briefly, she's working with us compiling district policies and procedures. She's working on information manuals, paraprofessional handbooks, trainings, and a procedural pocket guide, and she wanted me to share, this is the one that she did when she worked in Hemet, so this is the pocket guide that she's trying to make for us. She's also spearheading and organizing actions to improve communication and information structures as outlined by our action plan. She's working with administrative services with Barbara Kayani and Linda Steele to rebuild the special education section of the district website. And she's also helping me with coordination of all of the FICMAT recommendations and updating the stakeholders as we go through that process. So those are her major responsibilities, and that is, that is the end of my report.
I'm sorry. Thank, thank you for being patient.
Okay, and I will wrap it up then.
Ms. Sowaski, yes.
Okay, and in the spirit of this continuous improvement and the learning that Dr. Mills is talking about, we've been looking a lot about, okay, here, a year ago, June 12th, we got our FICMAT report. And so what has happened, you know, during this last year? In August, on August 11th, the board approved a motion that was to review, consolidate, prioritize, identify persons, and establish timelines for implementation of the FICMAT recommendations in here. We all know there was 153 of those. So through this highly-inclusive stakeholder process that we've been hearing about, some of been intimately involved in, we have accomplished this goal that the motion set forward, and we've organized the recommendations into priority focus areas, and you've heard these before because of the committees, the communication, organizational structure, programs, and professional development. And then those subcommittees have worked a lot. We've had the large group stakeholder, and then also those committees that have worked and made some significant progress. About half of the FICMAT recommendations, approximately 70 out of those 153, were identified through this process as duplicates, not an immediate priority, or to be or have been completed by staff. There have been a lot of things that have been completed. The remaining recommendations, then, have been identified as the priorities and will be included in a staff-designed and implemented action plan. Progress on the action plan can be tracked, then, by using the concept draw software that Dr. Noel shared with the last stakeholders group, the people that were there. And then some of the items of these priorities do have associated costs, and at the last board meeting, you received a list of the recommended expenditures from the stakeholders group. We moved forward with one expense this evening on adaptive technology. I know that item's been pulled, but I understand it's not because of that piece. And we will be continuing to bring items forward that have that threshold of $10,000, they're over $10,000 for board approval. In the FICMAT report, there are four recommendations that are related to establishing a district-sponsored advisory group or committee. These recommendations were designated by the stakeholders to be addressed by the executive director. So we'll be coming back in the future with a report on the establishment of that advisory group. And then the last part, during the last board meeting, several board members indicated that as the goals of this original motion in establishing the stakeholders' work group last August have been met, that staff should start wrapping up the current, the current stakeholders' work group process. Now, we're thinking that the members of the stakeholders will remain as resources, because they were, you know, carefully selected, self-selected from their groups. And they may serve on the advisory committee or group. We also may pull back that stakeholders' group and meet maybe annually or as needed, because it is a resource group. And we'll be bringing this back for action, board action, at a future board meeting, as far as wrapping up this process. So I'm, in closing, I'm going through this quickly. It's been a really busy year, a lot of meeting, a lot of planning, and at this point, our very capable staff here is ready to move forward and make some significant progress in the area. It's been a year. So, questions for any of us?
Do we want to take the public comment now before the questions? Okay, so we're now ready for a public comment.
Okay. Sandy Chove, followed by Lourdes Ribé, followed by Corey Bream.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to tell you a story tonight. A couple of weeks ago, I was getting ready to attend my son's annual IEP review. The school team and I have had good collaboration and communication all year, so this was to be a non-adversarial routine annual IEP review with no substantive changes to his program, only updating the goals to reflect the good progress he's made. The morning of the meeting, I received word that the district was sending a higher-level administrative representative to attend the meeting. I contacted- I contacted my son's case manager to ask why a district-level rep was coming to such a routine meeting, and she had no idea. So I contacted the school psychologist, and he also had no idea. So I called the district office to find out what was up. At first, I was told that the site team had invited the district rep. I said, "No, that's not correct. They have no idea. Why are you sending someone?" "Oh, okay," I was told. "Let me find out more." Shortly after, I received another call back with another version of the story also false. This continued throughout the day until finally I received a voicemail informing me that the district administration had wanted to attend my son's routine IEP review in order to convey the district's support of the program decisions we as a team had already made. In other words, they were sending an administrator for the sole purpose of telling us all, "Good job." Now, call me a cynic, but that's either world-class backpedaling, a colossal waste of district resources, or a bold-faced lie. We parents have been told for the last year that we need to leave the past in the past, move forward, rebuild trust. It's a whole new day in special education with all new administrators, and we have to give everyone a clean slate. And I have carried that banner for you, and I have urged my fellow parents to do just that. And now I have this to say. If you want me to be a collaborative partner now or in the future, I have four words for you: Don't lie to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chauv. Lourdes Uribe?
I was going to make this comment under the item where Dr. Mills spoke earlier, but I thought as she was speaking that I will let, you know, let us enjoy a little bit the beauty of the vision statement that she shared with us, especially the part where it says, "And I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses, and I may not be able to read well. I lost my glasses before I came to this meeting. The district embraces parents as partners in the process that promoted trust and respect." Probably, well, somebody was working on this vision statement. I was in juvenile court. I told you probably a couple meetings ago that my son, of no fault of his own, was sent to juvenile hold. I thought I was, I had seen everything in a special education, you know, by this district. I've been trying, together with my husband, to speak to somebody in the school. This is Dos Pueblos High School, wonderful, Dos Pueblos High School for high achieving students. But in a special education, I've been to the school's high council meetings. At Dos Pueblos High School, as it looks, it's in the dark ages in a special education. Students don't have books. Kids in I.I. programs are doing nothing. The more I get involved with the school improvement of DP, you know, the more amazed I'm like, and I've been at DP for five years. I came to speak to you about the injustice of sending my 14-year-old kid to juvenile court. I never been to juvenile court, and he was extremely nervous. My son has been suffering for a number of things that happened to him at Dos Pueblos High School. Rather than being with him at home reassuring him that people is going to help him and support him, I'm here waiting until 10:30 to tell you again. I came some meetings ago and said that the discipline assistant principal wrongly sent my kid, never allowed me to talk to him. I went to the principal. I did all I could to help him. I had to go in front of a judge to juvenile court with my son to be treated at the beginning.
30 seconds.
As a criminal, almost. I almost lost my tongue when I heard that 30 seconds. It's not, it's not good what is happening to our children, and I think it's your responsibility to help us. I'm going to have to hire an attorney to go to trial because I want to explain to the judge, you know, why my son is wrongly in juvenile court. You know, I've been forced to pay for an attorney because I don't know how I can defend. I don't know what's going to happen in trial.
Thank you, Mrs. Uribe.
You're welcome.
Corey Bream?
Hi, we have, hi, we have another regime starting, and hopefully we will turn a new page because some of them were here before, and there is some follow-through. But I'm disappointed on a few levels this week at work. I had three parents talk to me individually, and I keep thinking, at least in my case, things are better. So I'll share that. Things are significantly improved. But I had three parents talk to me just this week, one whose child isn't reading, approaching the fifth-grade level. They think they're going to have to pull them out of school. This is one of our schools. They have another child that they talked to me about where they're already homeschooling because of issues, and they made that decision last year, and they see no reason to re-enter. And another person talked to me about their autistic child and some of the bad circumstances surrounding that in a social manner that's extremely upsetting. So I keep thinking, in my case, things are better, and I want you to know that. But three people just in this last week spoke to me in my place of employment about schools because I wear the autism pin on my lab coat, and it brings up some conversation on occasion. So I'm not sure everything is fixed. I'll just start with that. I don't appreciate, as a public person, carrying the report that said nothing. I would love to know what came out of it. I mean, you can't do a report and report 16% is systemic error but not what our errors are. It'd sure be great. And I think that it's great advice to look at four years ago versus today. Hopefully, we've improved. Gosh, I'd like to see that. Improvement would sure shine a bright light on a circumstance, but to report nothing, to me, is a waste of time. I was disappointed, to be honest with you. You typed up a beautiful little thing with the smoking sailor and reported nothing except how you do the report. I don't care necessarily how you do the report as much as what the report gave us. What data did it really bring forth? What are you working on? How are you working on it? That's something that I would want to know as a board member. What did you find out? How are you going to fix it? What have you already done to fix it? But you didn't really give us that. You gave us an overplay, not terribly detail-oriented or helpful in any way to bring trust and understanding and hope and maybe even assistance from some of the parents in implementing some of those changes.
30 seconds.
So I'm just sharing that it isn't fixed. And I also would like to share that I've tried to get some of these parents to come to the meetings because I'm sure you're tired of the same old faces. And I really, really want you to know those other faces are out there. They don't want to be here at 11:00 at night. They have special ed kids, and about 90% are divorced. You can't really be a single parent and have children at home and be out till, well, it's only 10:30 tonight, right? Thank you, Ms. Bream.
I'd just like to say, I think that's a point well taken. And this is, I think we really need to consider where we place this topic on our agenda. And so I appreciate your bringing up that point, and I know that we certainly had anticipated getting to this earlier tonight. Our agenda was a bit optimistic, I guess, but I hope that we will address this.
Two weeks ago, it was 11:00.
I know that. And I agree with, I mean, my point is that I think we consistently put this towards the end of the agenda, and we know from experience that that's always much later than what is written on the page. So we really need to not put this so late on the agenda. And I, you know, appreciate the fact that all of you stayed this late and consistently do. So are there any other comments or questions on this item? Dr. Noel?
Yeah. I'm concerned with some of the comments made by Mrs. Sawaski. Talk about the FICMAT recommendations, and it seemed to imply that we were like done with them. And...
No. I'm just getting ready.
I simply want to remind you and anyone who wants to listen the fact that there is a long list of FICMAT recommendations that have not been addressed by any group. And I wish Mr. Herron were here because he's got that list by number memorized, and it's a long, long list, and includes some big ones. And why, you know, I think it was fairly much, fairly accidental almost, why some were and some weren't addressed, although we'd have to ask Dr. Miller why.
We have.
The other concern, I think, is more difficult. And that was the idea, and I've heard this several times, there's one FICMAT recommendation that somehow seems to get special weight, and that's the recommendation to create a parent advisory group. And the phrase is district-sponsored parent advisory group. Now, as a political scientist, what I hear in that is controlled by the district. And we have a parent advisory group that is self-appointed, most of whom sit here nine after nine, have dedicated countless hours of time. And I'm concerned because I think that district-appointed advisory groups in special ed have not served us well. And it's almost, I hate to kind of take an argument and say, "Just look at the results." But the results, somehow, we have those structures. We've had advice, but we've had a mess. Something didn't work. And I would suggest that one of the key elements of it has to do with the autonomy of, or the lack of autonomy of the group. And it's just, it's not a personal thing. It's just the nature of organizations and structures. So I would hate to see us move toward an advisory structure that eliminated autonomous voices, that made service on that committee at the pleasure of the district. I'd like to see us give up some power to empower parents. We need their praise. We need their criticism.
I'll just chime in on that last point that Dr. Noel raised before Ms. Sawaski has the chance to respond. And that is, Mr. Herron isn't here tonight, but I'm going to mimic something that he has said many times, and that is, "I take the FICMAT report very seriously, and I would need to have a lot of evidence and proof, other reasons why we should deviate from the FICMAT report." And I think that for parent advisory groups, we've had a terrific one, and I hope we continue to have that same terrific one. The FICMAT report didn't address autonomous outside parent groups. I'd expect and hope that we continue to have those. It did address having a district advisory, district-sponsored advisory group. And I had always foreseen that that would be something similar to what we already have for our EPAC, elementary parent and secondary parent, where you seek a representative from each site to come and meet at the district and talk about issues, and you get input from other sources as well, including any autonomous groups. But there isn't a district advisory one. I really think that that's important for our sites to have that. So I hope that we do follow through on that FICMAT recommendation.
Ms. Sawaski, did you want to respond?
Tell me to respond.
It's up to you.
Oh, I can certainly respond because we just had, Dr. Mills and I just had a, I'm responding to Dr. Noel's first question. We just had a, because Dr. Miller is here in the district working, we had a conversation about that because we were guessing that half, you know, to be honest, that half of the page didn't get copied or something with those, with the recommendations because it seemed like it was odd that just the first ones were the ones that were listed. In fact, Dr. Miller confirmed that they went through all of those. We have the copy, Dr. Mills has a copy as well as Mr. Herron and several of us, that have all those items that weren't considered essential, meaning that they were either duplicates or they were something that the staff was to do, that staff directed, similar to this parent advisory one. So it was very thoughtfully done as far as which ones were not included in that. And that is something that we were bringing back to the next stakeholders group, the meeting that's on the 24th, I believe. So we are addressing that. It's not, by no means do we consider the FICMAT recommendations done, fixed at all. We want to just move forward. Staff has addressed many of them, but that's not something we've seen, we can't really see it. And we do look forward to using that concept draw software to actually be able to show that, to track the progress, to be able to communicate how we're going through. And we want to get on this quickly, and it's, you know, we feel like we've taken a year to really get a lot of input, lots of meetings, and get work done. But we want to move in a much more strategic way, and staff certainly is ready to direct that now. So we're not forgetting those items. Those are their priorities. They are all part of the package.
Have we all gotten the list?
Dr. Service? I'm sorry, Dr. Noel? No, I'm sorry. I'm just completely blowing names today, so just bear with me, be willing to answer to the wrong name and...
Freudian slips are...
I don't know what the opposite of a Freudian slip is, but we'll go with whatever it is.
It's Rogerian.
Okay.
Does everyone have a copy of the list of the ones that are not on the list?
I don't believe that was ever distributed, and we will get that to you.
I had the feeling it was fortuitous whether one person got it or not. Maybe that would be helpful.
Yes. And I don't even, I really don't know how Mr. Herron got it.
He got it from Carol.
From, yeah. I mean, I'm sure that's where it came from, but I don't know what mattered. Maybe he just asked for it, but we will get that for you, for everyone.
That would be very helpful.
Yes.
Mrs. Deacon?
I just wanted to throw in my two cents about the parent advisory council because from the very beginning, that was an important component for me, and I value very much CECL's role. I also have seen the district advisory councils for elementary and for gate and for secondary, and our ELAT committees have all functioned really well. And I like to think that the fact that perhaps a special ed one in the past didn't work was for some of the same reasons that other things didn't work. But I am really optimistic that we can put together one that has representatives from every school because there are so many items in the FICMAT report that called upon parent input for specific tasks associated with each school. And so without that formal structure, I think we're missing communication from every one of our sites. And so to me, that's important, and it's always been important.
Well, I don't think I have really much to add to that because I would kind of just say ditto to all of it. So I probably will, I just will leave it at that, and hopefully we will get some more of this information and get that list, and we'll come back to this item, and we hope we will address the placement of this item on our agenda and how late we get to it. Okay. We are now at 10:30. It is the discretion of the board president to begin agenda items after 10:30.
Will you accept an appeal to the board president to postpone items F5, 6, and 7?
Well, yes, because I was going to say I'm not really willing to start a new agenda item after 10:30. I'm not, so what I would like, what I am hopeful that we can do, and let me just check with Dr. Service, will delaying 5, 6, and 7 create any undue hardship for the district?
Well, I know we're anxious to get the travel expense change made so that we know how to budget. 6, no, that can wait. I can change the dates on it and delay the start points.
Can I request then from the board, if we have revisions to suggest to the travel expense policies?
That would be helpful.
That we send them ahead of time and that we place this item on the action agenda on our next board meeting? on our next board meeting?
I have no problem with it going to action. I have no changes whatsoever.
I have no changes either.
Okay, so we can place this on the agenda, on the action.
Or we could just move it to action now.
Well, we, we did spot one area where we think we need to look back at the old language.
Okay, okay.
For F6, F6.
Oh, Meg on F, F5?
I'm looking at F5, yeah.
Can I just say one thing? That this board policy has a lot to do with the accounting procedures we're doing, we're changing our accounts payable procedures, and a lot of the debt, the information in here, I'd really like to tie into, to equal, to mirror our accounts payable manual.
In, in item F5?
In F5, yes. So I may come back with even heavier ones than what's in here.
Okay.
More restrictions.
So our, I think our agreement is to place it on the action agenda, so it doesn't put us behind by skipping it today. And if we have concerns with what we receive in the packet, we will try to get those concerns voiced ahead of time so that we can act on it at the next board meeting. Okay, so with that, we will skip 5, 6, and 7. We will go back to our pulled items from the consent agenda, which started with D4. Dr. Noel, you pulled item D4?
Yes, I did. This is the Youth Service, YSS?
Yes.
And I, I just feel so strongly that, in fact, I think this, I'm just confused because I thought we had one person of these four who spoke Spanish. Is that correct?
Yes. That's what I got from asking them after the last board meeting.
Okay, and I, I would like to see that written into the, I'd like to see that in writing. I don't, I don't, there's nothing here that's prevent them from simply replacing that person at some point with someone who doesn't speak Spanish. And I don't see how the mission, as described here, can be carried out by people who do not have true rapport with Spanish-speaking students.
So in the memorandum of understanding act...
Well, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see that, that one, I'd like to see one nailed down in writing, and I, and I'd like to go farther and see a second nailed down for the following year. I think Dr. Service had made the point last time that we wanted to, that we couldn't just impose that on them, but, but I would like to see us...
They do have one, okay.
I think they should all be bilingual.
Set some targets for them, and if, and perhaps your targets would be higher than the ones I'm suggesting, but I, I'd like to see some movement on this. I'd like to see it really firm.
So we can add that in the MOU, one of the items on here then, will provide. So maybe even up at the top, four full-time fighting back youth service specialists, that will provide, and we could say, or one, we could just add another line that says, at least one this year, for this, this year, for the 2010 school year, at least one of those...
For the full year.
For the full year. We'll, we'll be a bilingual staff member, our youth service specialist, and then we could add some language about...
And a second one for the following year.
Okay.
I personally, if we're going to go that route, which I support, I would rather see as, look at item number one on the MOU and say that we'll provide services at the following campuses in English and Spanish.
I would say in English and Spanish as needed because it could depend on their case.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. That's very parsimonious and, and also brief and to the point.
Okay. So just adding that to the following campuses in English and Spanish as needed.
Yep. Okay. Do we hear a motion on that item?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Motion passes 4-0. Okay, item D6?
D6.
That's me also. The new courses.
Oh, oh, I, I want, I, what I missed in this, this is the new course thing?
Yes.
And maybe, oh, she just left, the, our budget expertise just left. Here we are adding, adding new courses in the elective category, and yet in other contexts, we're saying, we've got too many undersubscribed elective courses, and that this has profound implications for our FTE and therefore our budget. And I just, I, when I look at this, I don't, I have the questions, but I don't know how to answer them.
And are you speaking to all of them or just, I mean, because there are...
I'm looking at one, one, two, and three particularly. I mean, all of them, as, as a general principle, sure, when you add new courses, presumably that increases the total supply of courses and, and the number of students...
Oh, no, not actually that, no. It would, it's another, actually, these are part of the pathway, even the CTE pathways, even down to the junior high level one, is, is building out the pathways, but it doesn't require, I mean, it doesn't cost...
This is, is not going to rob Peter de Pay Paul?
No, no. It's just an additional elective.
It's not going to, it's not going to less, it's not going to lower enrollments in another, in other courses?
No, because we have to keep the levels up for the, some students would rather take this, and they may have taken another one. It's just another option.
And then, so that one will, that one will now be smaller.
Or it will close.
Or it will close, or maybe...
That's the issue, that's the issue.
There could be two offered, maybe two sections, and now there's only one section, and this one would be additional.
Well, that was my question. I mean, and I think, both of you have said that, I think if, if you got, if, if you get enough to leave, you close the course.
Exactly.
Fine, but if you, if you're left with a, with a, you know, a half dozen students, then we're back to that problem of budget. So this is, I take your assurance, if this is not a problem, then I, then I have no problem with this. I, I would like to have known a number five. Is that a particular school?
Actually, that's district-wide, and that is brand-new to get that transition in place, so kids coming out of Reebok and it's, it's on the way to college, too.
Did I move to adopt under the explanation that you gave?
Second? I, oh.
All those in favor?
Actually, I'd like to discuss, just, I just have one or two more pieces I'd like to point out on that one.
Of that particular one, okay.
Yeah, on that one. I noticed one of, John Houchen at Santa Barbara Junior High said, or at least without the constraints of handwriting, here, here, because they had to either retype it or handprint it, and, and, and so obviously, I think that's a good thing to do.
That's a good point.
Also, I noticed that in our old form, we're still referring to classes as gate as opposed to honors.
I saw that as well.
Yeah, so we need to change that in our form, and in the, the trigonometry class, they didn't circle anything about which target population would be served, and maybe it's everybody, and so, but I, I doubt, or maybe it's just the general population. Do they, I'm sorry, I'm on DP math, new course approval, algebra 5, ABC, targeted population circle, all that apply, but what if none of these apply? What if it's just college prep? Then they just don't circle it?
I, you know, it's one of those that, depending on where the student is, it could be actually any of those students. I'm not sure if it's, yeah, could, a special ed student in another area. And this, I, I think you understand this, I, I don't know from the past, that this is the school that brought this forward, but it's not just at DP. This is a second half of a semester course that has trigonometry, and at San Marcos, it's called, let's see, I've got it in notes here, I think it's integrated math, intermediate algebra. It's basically the same course, but it's the semester that equals the year.
I see, I see, okay. All right, so those are just little minor details.
Okay. Can we call the question? On D6, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries 4-0. We are now on to D11.
That was mine also.
Yes.
Ms. Yuribey explained it to me, we, she had the same thing circled, and, of course, the general plan, it's tier three, and she explained it to my satisfaction.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries 4-0. That concludes the consent agenda. We are now at coming events. We, I know Dr. Service covered most of those. Is there anything that board members wish to add?
I don't have any more.
Okay. Future agenda items, I think we mentioned a couple.
We do have a couple.
Is there anything else that...
This is one Dr., I've shared with Dr. Service already, but it has to do with the impact of healthcare reform legislation on our employees, and I've asked for us to be updated on, so that we make sure all our employees know what their new options will
And I have one as well. Sometime, I was thinking sometime this summer, summer is around the corner. We, I think we need to be talking about boundaries for our elementary school sites.
I believe that, that Mr. Herron was also going to bring up the issue of having a, a board, whether it's a board roundtable or retreat, to discuss focus goals, et cetera. So I'm sure he'll bring that, right, and the, and the self-evaluation. So I think he'll bring that up. I wanted us to, to, well, I wanted to get a sense from fellow board members whether there is still any discussion to be had on the issue of allowing students to participate in graduation ceremonies in spite of having been suspended or expelled. And so I wanted to get the sense of the board whether it was, generally felt that we had finished that discussion, or whether there's still more to discuss on that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm collecting information on seniors as to how many didn't make it through graduation for whatever reason.
Yes, so maybe we can put that in general, back on the agenda, and we can address it.
And review that information. Good.
Thanks. Okay, so I think that brings us to adjournment. Our next board meeting will be May 25th at 7:00.